It being six o'clock on Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, I'm calling this Board of Selectmen meeting to order, and we'll begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify us at this time. And just to keep in mind, you can now watch past recordings on their YouTube channel, so check that out. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by contacting the selectman's office. This Thursday, April eleventh, there will be a swearing and ceremony for the new police chief, Brian Holmes, at six P. M. at the intermediate school, and the public is welcome to attend. On April sixteenth, the agricultural commission is sponsoring a program for all ages on raising goats. The guest speaker for the event is Beth Corbett, who is a local goat expert. The event will take place at the senior center. It will begin at seven P. M. The agricultural commission will also be sponsoring a presentation on Blue Stem Natives, also scheduled to take place at the senior center, this time on Tuesday, April thirtieth, at seven P. M. Don, are these events, do they require a registration fee or registration at all, or is it just free and open to the public? Do you know?
I believe it's just open to the public.
I'd have to look that up.
Okay. I think the last event they hosted did not require registration, so I believe you can just come.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. Related to that topic, between May fourteenth and May twenty-eighth, residents can order native plants on bluestemnatives.com, and orders can be picked up at the Highway Barn on Saturday, June first. For more information, please visit the town's website at KingstonMA.gov. The public library also has several upcoming events. On Wednesday, April seventeenth, the Archives will host an open house at six P. M. On Saturday, April twentieth, they will also host an exhibit talk at two P. M. And Thursday, April twenty-fifth, they will host an interest group at seven P. M. For more information, you can visit the library's page on the town's website. Parking lot at the Adena is still closed and will remain closed through May first due to the reconstruction of the boat ramp. As far as I know, everything is on schedule, so...
Boat ramp has been poured and will be put in place sometime in the next week.
So we should be ready for boating season when May first comes. Kingston Farmer's Market begins their two thousand and twenty-four season on Sunday, May fifth, from ten A. M. to two P. M. at Grace Beach. Farmer's markets will run the first Sunday of each month through October. Annual town meeting, scheduled for Saturday, May eleventh, and annual town election will be Saturday, May eighteenth, which is the following Saturday. So thank you to the volunteers and staff that work at those events. We very much appreciate their time, and I know it's not great to have it two weekends in a row, so... So thank you for that. Keeping in mind, the last day to register to vote in the local election is Wednesday, May eighth. And I know no one wants to think about next winter, but we should discuss at some point that we all voted back in August for a new plowing policy related to private ways. So I will have more information at our next meeting than I can add to the announcements, but I just wanted to point that out. Is there any way that we can add that plowing policy to the homepage sometime soon, just so that folks can know what's in store for them?
We'll have it added tomorrow.
That'd be great. That'd be great. So just as a reminder, it went into effect April first of this year, hoping to give folks time to make any adjustments they need to make to their private roadways before next winter, so that they can be cleared. All right, so anyone interested in volunteering, we have a number of vacancies on various committees and boards, and the full list of openings is on the town website. If you are interested in getting involved, you can reach out to any of us, or you can reach out to the selectman's office. Are there any other announcements? No? Okay. Right, so is there anyone here for open forum? Going once, going twice. Okay. Right, so our first appointment is our town clerk. He's going to talk to us about reviewing some changes in the general bylaws for codification confirmation.
Good evening, everyone. I won't be taking questions after this, so pay attention. That was dear, easily accepted.
Not an election here for Paul, I guess.
So, good evening. Let me just read this, which you've all been apprised of, but it kind of gets right to the point. "We have contracted with General Code for the codification of our general bylaws. Funding was approved in two thousand and nineteen, and I started the process right then at two thousand and nineteen. The purpose of the codification is to highlight errors, inconsistencies, updating outdated references to publications and mass general laws, and other issues that may affect the accuracy, clarity, and enforceability of our code. Codification is suggested every five to ten years. Kingston has not had a codification since April of nineteen ninety-four, which is one of the reasons why it's taken so long to get it completed. The town clerk had been responsible for updating the document post-town meetings that had approved bylaw changes by the eternal attorney general. The review and recommendations provide an editorial and legal analysis. The process has been expensive, yeah, extensive and time-consuming. We're at the final stages before we complete the final draft. Any and all departments and committees that have had any recommendations beyond numbering and grammar correction have been notified and each approved the suggested changes. The Board of Selectmen approval is pending. With the approvals, we can move forward to a final draft that can be presented at town meeting on May eleventh. Once completed, we'll have access to a fully codified product with search capability. The final will include any and all approvals from the A. G.'s as of the last special town meeting held in October of twenty-three. It has been and will be a continued great pleasure to have this special project completed and look forward to working with General Code in the future. General Code will provide free access to online training." So I'm here before you today because there were several changes that the board would need to take a look at and someone sign off for me that I can move forward. I believe they were all very general, grammar, changing of ordinance numbers and general bylaws. So nothing really has changed in the draft codification that would change our bylaws. It's more an improvement, makes it better legally, legal standing. So it's, like I said, it's been a long process, but we're very close to the final, and hoping that you guys could sign off on that tonight.
Great.
And I guess I will take a couple of questions, if anybody has one.
Does anyone have any questions? And if anyone's interested, it is in the meeting packet available to the public on the website, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And to give you an example, like, one of the changes is instead of saying six months of age or older for dogs being licensed, it says six months, it says over six months.
Over six months, yeah, a lot of it is just a little tweak to the wording from the original bylaw that we approved at town meeting.
Having like a check for fifty dollars versus just saying the fee set by the Board of Selectmen.
Exactly, exactly.
Don't even be in the bylaw, but...
Yeah, and it, you know, it references a lot of mass general law. Mass general law has changed some of the numbers through their codification, so they go in and update the laws that we have. So we go before town meeting. I'll have, like I said, I have sign off from all of the departments about the Board of Selectmen. I'll be prepared to go before a town meeting, and we'll have two articles at town meeting. One will be renumbering the bylaws, and the second will be to approve the corrections that were suggested by General Code. At that point, when it's, once it's approved by town meeting, we'll have a final draft. The final draft will be presented to, I believe, the planning board and maybe the Board of Appeals. They may have, if there's changes, that they may require those two boards to have open public meetings, public hearings, but I don't think we're actually going to get to that point on anything.
Okay.
I mean, everything that we've ever voted on has been approved by the attorney general, so like I said, you know, other than wording and stuff, there's no major changes to the bylaws.
Great, so if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the changes to the bylaws presented this evening, recommended by General Code as part of the recodification process, and request the town administrator include a warrant article in the two thousand and twenty-four annual town meeting warrant for voter consideration.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. All right, so we opened a public hearing for our six P. M. here for the petition from Verizon New England Incorporated and N. Star Electric regarding a pole to be installed on Maple Street. So we opened that. We need to reopen that hearing. Do we know if anyone from Eversource or...? Okay, great, excellent. So we had some questions for you that came up in the last meeting, but I just, first, we need to start by having a motion to reopen the hearing.
I move the Board of Selectmen to open the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's five zero zero. So the question that we, that was, that came out of the last meeting was, there were three poll, two polls on the map now that we saw, and then one proposed, and the question that was asked of us was, are any of the polls that are currently there coming down? Is this a replacement poll, or is it an additional poll?
Okay, first of all, Don Vanner with Verizon.
Thank you.
Hello, and I also need to apologize first. From what I understand, we missed the meeting last time. I did not know that, but I am here to apologize on behalf. To get to your question, I was just out at the site. Those polls that are there now, they're staying. This is meant to be supporting Eversource's reconductoring project, and they need this other poll put in place to help support that. This is a request from Eversource. I am here from Verizon.
I know. So you get to be the messenger, right?
Well, we're the poll set in the area, so we have to be the ones to present this to you. But this is their request, and it's their project. I wish I knew more about their reconductoring project, so I could tell you more, but what I've been told is they need this other poll in to support that project. From what I also saw out at the site, there's no sidewalks here either, so we don't have to worry about ADA compliance. And pole one, which is the one closest to Landing Road, is a little bit tippy, so... I think they might be also hoping that this is also supporting the existing pole line as well. Just from what I've seen in the past, these, I'm trying to give you a little bit more ammunition, as it were.
Yeah, so I guess the feedback we got from residents who live and work in that area was that there are already a lot of poles right there, and adding, if we were, my understanding was it was going to replace those two poles. So that seemed like a great idea. Adding a third pole, I guess... I'd need to understand what it actually does, adding that pole, what the benefit is to their project as well, and I know you can't speak for Eversource, but they, they're very close together. I mean, it's up there if you want to, if, it's, they're very close together.
Yeah, sixty-four feet away, I saw, yeah. And I just took measurements. They're pretty accurate to what you see on the map.
So what happens if we said no?
Well, it would either go back to the drawing board and they would...
He just brought a wireless mic in case, if you needed to go over to the map, but we're good.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you. So if you say no, if your intention is to say no, I would rather ask respectfully for a continuance, so I could get you some more answers. And I wouldn't need to come back in person. I could probably call in and get those answers for you next time. But you have every right to say no.
Sure, sure, no, and I understand that. I like to ask what a no does.
Yeah, a no just means we have to start over, because this is Eversource's poll, poll request, and we would need to just start, they probably have a very good reason for asking for this, because we don't, I mean, this is, believe it or not, just this one poll is costing a lot of money, so they don't ask for these things just because they want them, just to look good, because they don't. They want them to support whatever projects they have going on. So I can't give you any specifics, because I don't know.
No, understood. Anyone have any questions?
I have a question, if you don't mind, and it's to the board, because I don't remember exactly who said what in our meeting last time, but I thought that the neighbor didn't have a problem with three polls. I thought it was Pine or Joan River and Landing, is that right?
I was saying the neighbors, because it's a neighbor of...
No, I know, but I didn't think that the actual neighbor, the man who's here...
I'm not sure we provided him with accurate information, though, because my understanding was that that was a replacement poll, so I don't know.
Yeah, I think the neighbor was asking, thinking, thinking it was a replacement.
So I don't know if he would have had the same opinion.
I just couldn't remember. Right.
I don't know. So, okay. Sheila, questions, comments, thoughts?
Yeah, I wish Eversource was here.
Yeah, that's not his fault, though.
It's not your fault.
I wish Eversource was here.
I'm sorry.
Did you hear from Eversource?
I haven't heard from them. My thought was, and I hate to keep dragging this out, and I apologize for doing that, but, you know, can you go back to Eversource and ask them what it would take to not increase the number of polls in the area? And we can continue the hearing for two weeks. I don't know when the, I don't know when the plan is to actually do this work, if it'll be this year or next year, based on the work schedule you guys have on some of the other projects you're working on in town. So I don't think this is going to be a problem time-wise, it'd impact your schedule, but I just, to try to find a happy medium, so to speak, and I think the concern is more polls in a certain area, especially if one is tippy. Maybe you can fix the tippy poll, and that would satisfy it, but it'd be nice to get a sense of, frankly, what it would take to, and is it reasonable to do whatever you gotta do and not increase the number of polls in the area?
And just for a little background, we've received a lot of feedback from residents all over town feeling like there have been a lot of polls installed, and that's not your fault, it's just the nature of the work, but anytime I can have questions answered about why we have to put in more polls is helpful. So without that, I don't...
Sure, yeah, and there's a, there's a, there's a lot to unpack there, but from what I could tell you, putting in the poll wouldn't take that long after approval happens. Generally, you just get it right in the queue, and within a few months, it would, it takes a few hours to get it done, once they actually get the crew out there, and then you just need to attach the new lines to it, so... And this isn't a double poll situation either, so it would just be a new poll, and when the new, when all the lines, all the companies for each of the lines needs to go out there, they can, and just reattach or attach them. And I understand about the other polls. That's why I was going to be respectfully requesting a continuance, because then I could maybe get you some answers if I do some reaching out to Eversource.
I think our highway superintendent wants to add something.
No, I'm going to add this as a resident of the town of Kingston.
Oh, okay.
Part of this project started on Main Street two years ago. We have double poles along Main Street. We were told a year ago that those poles will be removed. We still haven't had a timeline on that. We've asked Eversource for a tight, an update on the placement of the transformer at the library property, which is part of this upgrade that Eversource wants. Still haven't heard anything back on that one yet. So I would strongly suggest that the board is going to continue this meeting till next selectmen's meeting, that a representative of Eversource shows up to this meeting and has the answers to those questions before, as a resident and a department head, the board votes in favor of placing this pole on Maple Street. Maybe if we get Eversource at a meeting, we can get the answers we've been looking for for at least two or three years. And it's up to the board, but I've been getting questions about Main Street, what's going on at Twenty-seven with the polls, the library, and all this is, this is for an upgrade. Now, what I understand, and like I said, I'm kind of involved here, is the purpose of putting the transformer at the library was to get rid of the substation on Landing Road. So I don't know why, we're just adding one pole to Maple Street when, I don't understand why that's there. And the other thing I want to ask the board is, every time we give these guys permission to put a pole in, I think before they put a pole in, they should contact the highway superintendent for the placement of that pole. I don't know if you're aware of it, but up on Twenty-seven, at the corner of Brook Street, a pole was placed probably four or five months ago in the sidewalk. The town, the federal government spent over eleven million dollars ten years ago making those sidewalks handicap accessible and five feet wide. All of a sudden, now we got a brand-new forty-five-foot pole at the sidewalk. Paul, there's nothing we can do about it. We need answers. We can't continue to go forward here, so if it's the board's pleasure to continue the hearing, I'll come back in two weeks, and we can have some more questions and answers, or Eversource needs to be here with these answers. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay.
If you'd like a motion, I'll give you one.
Any objections to continuing?
Well, I'll go by this guy, okay, yes.
So I move the Board of Selectmen to continue the public hearing.
Second.
To when? Tuesday, the twenty-third at six P. M.?
Tuesday, the twenty-third at six P. M., please.
Can we add that?
We can put that in the motion. We can put that in the, I'll get that here. Keith and I can work on that, right, Keith?
Absolutely.
All right, so we're moving, so we're continuing the public hearing to Tuesday, four twenty-three, at six P. M. Eric made the motion, Tyler seconded?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And virtual participation is totally fine. All right. Okay, so moving on, so discussion of compliance by an order. So as I reviewed in our last meeting, in our meeting on November twenty-first, our board voted a dog named Ren a nuisance dog and provided six conditions that the owner was to comply with within sixty days. On February first, the owner contacted animal control to inform her he had complied with the first two conditions. The animal control officer at that point gave the owner a thirty-day extension in February to comply with conditions three, four, and six, and we supplied an extension on the insurance, which has, I think, since been resolved. The, so we received a notification that the owner was in process of rehoming the dog, but asked we delay a vote regarding possible enforcement action until tonight, to give him two more weeks to secure that new home for the dog. I don't want to speak for you. You're here, so if you want to speak to that request, you're welcome to come to the microphone and give us an update.
Matt Fraser, sixty Walter Pond Road. We did have a potential home lined up, but due to some extenuating circumstances, it did fall through. So we're continuing to, I'm continuing to work with a friend of mine who has a lot of contacts in the dog training and rehabilitation world, as well as working with the American Belgian Malinois Rescue League to try and find her a good home. I was hoping to try and keep her close by, so I could visit her every now and again, but if they find her a home that's further away, then they find her a home that's further away. And I understand that you guys have a job to do. I respect that. You gotta do what you gotta do. I'm going to keep trying to find a good home for her. That's all I can say.
So I had an opportunity to speak to the owner of the dog Saturday, and he gave me a call, wanted to know what was happening, and I explained to him where I thought that the board was and what they did last time, and there is, there is a Kingston resident who came to visit me last week, who I think some of you know and may have spoken to, who is trying to, who is assisting to try to find a rehoming situation. So I also reached out to town council to ask for some guidance. My impression is typically if we, if we go, if we filed a, some sort of paperwork in court, the court doesn't seem to act as quickly sometimes as we think they might. So I was trying to get a sense from our town council how long it would take to have the court render a decision, and whether or not it made sense to have the court process and the dog owner trying to rehome the dog occurring concurrently. What our council said was basically, he would go to, he would draft a preliminary injunction that would, that would in all likelihood take at least two weeks to have a court, a court date set. At that court date, the judge would hear from both sides, and then it would take some period of time, and it depends on the judge, it sounds like, frankly, how long it's going to take to render a decision from that two-week period. So I, as I explained to Ren's owner, you know, the board is trying to balance, trying to be sensitive to his needs and rehoming a dog with those of the neighborhood who is concerned about their safety, and so my suggestion, frankly, was going to be to the board to suggest that these two processes work at the same time and authorize the town council to file a preliminary injunction in court, knowing it's going to take at least two weeks to to have a court date, and then some period of time after that to render a decision, which would hopefully give enough time to find a proper home for the dog. But if, if in three weeks, four weeks, whenever it happens to be, the decision came down, and Ren was still unable, you weren't able to find a home for, to rehome Ren in, a process would have been in place and to allow for next steps to be taken, if that ultimately is where it goes. So that's an update that I just wanted to give the board tonight, after speaking to council earlier today.
Okay. Thoughts? Thoughts, questions?
I'm in agreement with that process. I think it's...
Yeah, I think running them concurrently works.
So essentially, we would just be authorizing council to file that preliminary injunction, and you'd keep doing what you're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
I remember we got town calls as well.
All right. So does someone want to make that motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen authorize council to file lawsuit in district court to enforce the selectmen's decision against the owner. Do we need to modify that at all?
Is there a second?
No, okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll keep in touch, let you know what's happening, and I'm sure you'll hear, you know, potentially from the court as well, but I'll...
And I'll let you know of any new developments.
Yeah, yeah, reach out whenever you need to.
I'm reaching out to some other rescues too, not necessarily Malinois, but they're the most skilled at handling them.
Sure.
But I'm reaching out to some German Shepherd rescues as well, because they are similar. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, so now we are moving to review the capital planning committee recommendations. So we're joined this evening by the chairman of the capital planning committee, who's here this evening to present their recommended fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement plan. Also in the materials, though, was a spreadsheet detailing not just the fiscal year twenty-five projects, but also the, I believe you have the five-year plan in there as well. Am I making that up?
You do.
Oh, okay.
You're right.
Am I misremembering? That's the...
Nope. Kim, do you, do you know this guy?
Nope.
Any relation? I see a similar last name. I have not...
All right. Heatham Burke, chairman of the capital planning committee.
Committee. Heath is the hot seat.
Last time, this was a full room.
The tribunal seat.
Full room, and now I've got the space myself, right? What? Excuse me. This new, this new wave of Paul is hitting me pretty hard, so I apologize in advance. So the first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to jump around a little bit, a few subjects through the sort of capital planning universe, give you a picture of what we're looking at. Typically, the chair comes in, lists off all the projects, the costs, and answers questions. I'd like to give a little bit more of a narrative this time. The capital planning committee has moved the level services capital improvement plan for fiscal year twenty-five. There are no new capital projects, only replacements of existing, sometimes failing, assets, and the plan proposes no new leases at this time, which is a first in the recent, in the time that I've been on the committee. I think that, understanding what we're facing in fiscal year twenty-five, we need to have, we have to look at the capital improvements in a greater context. I think that understanding the, what we're facing in fiscal year twenty-five, we need to have, we have to look at the capital improvements in a greater context. So I'd like to begin by discussing some of the projects we didn't move. We had over a million dollars in requests that were not considered for funding for fiscal year twenty-five for various reasons. I'll just name off a few of those for you. There was a half a million dollars in road and sidewalk improvements that we moved last year but did not this year. Hundred sixty thousand dollars in townhouse tile replacements. Three school projects that were equivalent to just about ninety-five thousand dollars. One in particular I'd like to highlight is that for at least two years now, we've had in our capital plan to replace, or I should say repave, the Smith Lane Station Two parking lot. Two years ago, that parking lot went on the capital plan at fifty thousand dollars estimate for the work materials. This year it's seventy-five thousand dollars, and we still had to punt it. It is, that's, that's an increase of fifty percent. It, it really demonstrates even as a smaller project, what is going on in the economy right now in terms of capital assets, acquiring them and maintaining them. So as we kick those down the road, I'd like to talk a little bit about what is coming down the road. After fiscal year twenty-five, it looks right now that fiscal year twenty-six will be fairly normal capital year for the town of Kingston. In twenty-twenty-seven, three projects alone are estimated to be over one-point-six million dollars. They include a trackless machine with attachments for the Streets, Trees and Parks Department, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Ambulance three replacement, five-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. It could be refurbished, we don't know yet, but if it does, it would be somewhere in the three-hundred-thousand-dollar range. We're also looking at replacement for engine number three. Now, the other night at the Finance Committee meeting, the chairman of the Finance Committee said we'll eventually be buying another ambulance for six-hundred thousand dollars. We replaced engine one in calendar year twenty-two, I believe it was, over seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. The current estimate to replace engine three in fiscal year twenty-seven is eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. But my opinion, and I've run this by the fire chief, is that that price tag will probably be at a million dollars when we get to it. That's two years from now. In twenty-twenty-eight, we have to replace the Vector truck. For those who don't know, it's a truck with a large vacuum on it that cleans out catch basins and water pipes and various other applications. That truck went on the capital plan, I believe, was two years ago at five-hundred thousand dollars. Every year, the superintendent of Streets, Trees and Parks knows I ask about the status of that truck. Right now, the last I checked, it was six-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. That's a thirty-two percent increase in two years. The price is going up as we're discussing it right now. That's going on throughout the capital plan. Those two years do not include what we hoped to do was half a million dollars a year in continued roadworks. So you can assume that if we were to pursue those, that would add to it. It doesn't include all the small projects from thirty thousand dollars for this to fifty thousand dollars for that, the two annual patrol vehicle replacements for the police department that we typically do. I mean, next year of a two-hundred thousand dollar generated for Kingston Elementary School. Any of these projects I just highlighted could potentially be funded through a lease commitment, which I am personally hesitant to add new leases at this time. We're a bit overextended. We need them for many things. Many, there are applications which they are very strategic to use. I'm concerned about using them right now as, as we make commitments to them now, it's money in the future, it's dedicated to paying leases, which means we have less flexibility to handle projects that come up in the upcoming fiscal years. We'll just, we're just dedicated to those payments. The engine three replacement without a doubt would likely be funded through a lease when we get to that point. The other ones, possibly. Right now, lease commitments cost us, with the interest rates, at six percent. As I said, they tie up future years' funds and reduce our flexibility to address new projects as they arise. It's my assessment thus far that we may need to look at fiscal year twenty-six to move up one or more of the substantial capital requests from fiscal year twenty-seven, which by the way is a discussion we have not had formally as a committee yet, in order to better load balance the cost of capital assets year to year. Plus with the cost increases, it's, it's gonna be practical to at least look at it. So with that, I'd like to move on to the current year's capital plan. I'm gonna start with projects one, six, seven, and eight before moving on to projects two through five.
Sorry, just pause there for a second. So in the packet, that's the page that's labeled Article nineteen, Article nineteen, Fiscal Year Twenty-Five Capital, for anybody following along, should be, I'm in the packet, so it's not, it's not scrolling through a PDF. I'm in the actual active packet. Yep, okay. And then if you wanna turn that guy, and then everybody can see what you're talking about. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Project one is a replacement of the townwide phone system at a cost of sixty thousand dollars. The phone system, which is used by all of the town minus the schools and dispatch, is at the end of its useful life. The, the supplier of the phone system is no longer supporting it as it's obsolete. The four servers which, which are located at the townhouse, police department, fire department, and the library will be replaced with virtual servers. Project number six, we have engineering for various traffic safety improvements, fifty thousand dollars for Streets, Trees and Parks. Projects have and will continue to be possibly projects such as roadside drainage, sorry, drainage issues, other issues that require engineering services in order to solve and find a plan to handle. Project number seven is one we see every year. It's replace patrol SUVs. We're looking to replace two police interceptors at a cost of a hundred and fifty, eight thousand fifty-six dollars. Project number eight is replace the exterior steel doors at the intermediate school for a hundred thousand dollars. According to the principal, rust is appearing. There's concern that rust and wear and tear on the moving parts could interfere with the door's function. The weather stripping is gone. The doors are, there's three sets of double doors to the outside, three sets of double doors to the inside. Creates an airlock, which helps with efficiency, and the three sets of doors help prevent a bottleneck in the case of an emergency evacuation. So those doors have to work. The project also involves replacement of some windows and screens. Okay. Back to project number two, three, four, and five. The backstory is, is that as I understand it, going back to the twenty-teens, the Capital Planning Committee generally had an annual budget of five-hundred thousand dollars. During that time, many of the trucks for Streets, Trees and Parks and solid waste departments were deprioritized in order to favor potentially emergency services or, I mean, I don't have the exact record of what they were doing, but many of the trucks, trucks were kicked down the road. Since I've been on this committee, we've been replacing two trucks per year. They're in bad shape. The manufacturer of a lot of the trucks has got, one of the manufacturers has gone out of business, there's no parts availability without sending somebody out to junkyards to find the parts. The trucks are thoroughly rusted. The tubes and hoses underneath are disintegrating. I've climbed under several of them myself to have a look. There's transmission problems in some of the trucks we have, rust, electrical issues. What we're looking to do is to use some of the free cash that we have to replace the remaining four of the older trucks. One of these trucks is in nineteen ninety-eight and still in service. One of the trucks has been, I believe, discontinued as of winter. I don't know if it was the ninety-eight or the two thousand or the two thousand and two. It was the two thousand and two?
According to the highway superintendent in the back.
Alright. The trucks are increasing at a cost of about ten percent per, per year. The lead times out of the factory, I think, used to be six to eight months. We'd be looking at one, one and a half years if we're lucky, maybe two years. Factories have thousands of trucks similar on backwater. Demand is high, supply is low. First law of economics, prices go up. You have currency inflation on top of that. And to complicate matters, the federal government has a new diesel emission standard that we'll have to comply with if we wait in order to buy these trucks. That standard will add between five and twenty thousand dollars per truck, depending on the size of the engine. Unfortunately, at this time, last I heard, we don't even know if the transmissions on the market will be compatible with the new engines, which could further complicate the issue. Just to give you more of that broad picture, this standard will add sixty to a hundred thousand dollars per engine on fire trucks. So in an effort to move quickly, avoid these costs, as they're mounting very quickly, we're looking to, instead of replacing one or two trucks per year, replace these four and potentially not have to hear about another dump truck replacement until sometime well into the twenty-thirties. I mean, you know, unless aliens come down, steal one, and the insurance policy says it doesn't cover interglactic grand larceny, grand auto theft, it's, you know, that's the kind of problem we're in. The trucks are aging quickly. If we take care of these trucks, we should be good for a while. We should be able to move on to projects such as paving, fire department parking lots. The schools are undercapitalized. There's comfort control problems with, in the KAS building. There's all kinds of exterior problems on the KES building. All the brick mortar needs to be repointed. The buildings look pretty good. I would hate for people down the road to say we should just demolish them and build new ones because they're looking old and the costs are mounting. We need to get on top of that. But it's a hard thing to do when your emergency services can't get to the scene of the emergency because there's snow or when those expensive trucks are getting broken up because they're hitting big potholes. The highway department is just as essential to the town's safety as the police and fire are. And a lot of our capital's out on those roads. The roads have to be in good condition. I'm sorry? He's having a heart attack?
He's giving you a thumbs up.
Okay. Well, he likes to hear that, that, you know, the highway department's an important department.
He was worried for a second there. Did you have more?
Well, I have other notes, but I'd rather just answer questions.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Just to try to add on to some of the things that Mr. Amber mentioned, just to, to try to quantify what we're looking at. And first and foremost, I guess, we, we had, we had a, a, a three-point-five-million-dollar retained, retained earnings, excuse me, free cash to start, which has, which is a lot of money certainly, but it's been around the three-million-dollar range now for the past three years. Knowing the challenges that we're gonna be facing with supply and demand and the fact that, that the trucks are gonna go up on average, using the ten percent increase in inflation and the five-to-twenty-thousand, twenty, five-to-twenty-thousand-dollar increase because of emissions. Each of these trucks are gonna, are gonna go up between thirty-two and forty-eight thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-six. I, I certainly understand and was a little concerned frankly initially when Mr. Bazler mentioned the need for four trucks rather than two. But when we, when we, when we sat down and started crunching numbers, in my time here, the FinCom has always said, geez, we want to keep at least a million dollars, million to a million and a half dollars in free cash. With what's been, what's proposed in the Warren articles that, that are in front of you tonight and will be in front of FinCom next week, we will have just over a million dollars, one point, a million thirteen thousand dollars in, in free cash if everything we're proposing is funded, including these four trucks. So just like, you know, a, a, any budget, we look at the resources that we have and how we best utilize those. To, to try to provide these four trucks in, in one year is not the norm certainly, but to try to, to try to save a significant amount of money per truck and have the cash to do so, and to Heath's point, not burden future fiscal years with additional leases that may have required increases in how much is contributed to the capital stabilization fund, I think it makes a lot, it makes a lot of sense to get out in front of this change. Use an asset that we have without putting ourselves in any financial concern or, or, or issues with the financial condition. We're not wiping out free cash. So to me, it's, it's, it's a reasonable approach to take. We get these trucks behind us. And in two years, we'll have almost an entire flight of fleet, excuse me, of prime-grade trucks. And frankly, to, to, as Heath mentioned before, you know, it really satisfies, with the exception of, of the Vector truck, it really satisfies Streets, Trees and Parks as far as equipment goes for, for a while. The other thing I guess I'd mention, just to make sure everybody's aware, two of the four vehicles, and I'd ask Mr. Bazler to correct me if I'm wrong, but two of the four vehicles we're looking to, to change from an eight-wheel to a ten-wheel, correct? No. Six-wheel to a ten, six-wheel to a ten-wheel, excuse me. What that does is provide Streets, Trees and Parks, you know, with, with a larger truck that can haul more salt in the wintertime, haul more materials of whatever they have.
Also, if I may, they have a lot more thrust to plow snow. The smaller trucks will move the snow and with every pass, the snow, the, the plow shear is building up on the side of the road. So they go from opening up a two-lane road, gradually coming down to a one-lane road. They need, or they benefit from having the ten-wheelers to come through at some point in the process and open it back up.
Plus they look a lot cooler too.
They do. Rattle your house too.
Bigger, batter, louder. I like it.
So we looked at, you know, we looked at the, the funding scenarios of trying to acquire four vehicles. All four cash, three cash and one lease, two, two cash and two lease, and one cash and three lease. Frankly, it made, made more sense and, and, and put the town in a better financial position longer term, not to have the burden of, of one or more leases for these trucks moving forward. So I know it's a big, it's a big ask. I know the FinCom has some concerns about it. I, I put together a four- or five-page memo for the board, that's in your board packets, that provides some additional information on some of the articles, including this one, to provide some additional information to the, to this board and to the Finance Committee. So there's an understa, a basic, as much of an understanding as, as they want to have, I guess, on why these four trucks are being asked for in one particular year. I think it, it makes financial sense.
Can I ask a question? So I just want to mention that like, we have a, like, three quarters of a million dollars, like, in leases. So if we go to lease these things, it's just gonna be just bad going on leasing. I feel like we're flat-out owning these things, I think, is, is more, most important. I mean, I know that building them might take some time, but like you said, it's gonna cost us more in the long run.
The lease is a lease to own, so it's basically like a mortgage for the truck.
Yeah.
So we're not returning the truck at the end of the lease. I mean, that's, that's one of the confusing things. In heavy equipment, construction, certain industries, they have this like lease to own and, and so forth concept, and that's applied here. And I'd also like to say that if you're hearing in the news that there have been some improvements in inflation, that's more consumer price index inflation goods, I don't believe that's occurring with the truck.
And we can't not pay our leases. I think it's important for people to understand that we can't not pay our leases.
You can't not, so, so...
We cannot pay our leases, but they take the truck back.
Exactly. What I'm saying, like, it's, it's, it's seven-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand dollars in leases. So I think it's, it's important to say that that's because you paid by that.
But I think it's important to realize that all of those leases that you see, if you actually look at them, they're all second year, third year, fifth year. There's one, I think, maybe one or two that say first year, but we agreed to them last year already. These are not new.
Yeah, these are not new. You have to pay.
So if you have all those leases piled up and you're committed to them, and you're looking down the road, okay, at this point, some of them are gonna sunset, we can start doing other things. If around that time, the generators at the police and fire stations are supposed to be replaced, and they break down now, do you want to go through an emergency when we need them, those employees the most? When their buildings cannot communicate with the outside world because their phone system runs on electricity provided by their generator? We would need to have it and move it in that year or get it sooner. But if we're tied up with leases, there's just not gonna be enough money for a six-figure generator. How do we get past? Do we buy a used generator? I'd rather not. Not for an emergency services building.
What was the, what was said the lead time was on this?
Could be anywhere from a year to a year and a half. That we're, we're expecting probably two years in some of them.
Yeah, so I mean, it's also realizing that it's gonna take a year and a half to two years to get them. If we prolong this a year, do you, I mean...
We're locking in the price now.
Which is, yeah.
And we're, we're potentially gonna get, you know, right now we should be getting a model that doesn't have the new engine, that we don't know if it'll work with the transmission, and whether the factories will have to retool, retool beyond that.
Are we, how much do we pay upfront?
Depends on how it's structured. From what I've understood, if it's free cash, there'll potentially be a deposit. The rest of the money might stay in a bank account and earn interest, and then payment upon delivery. The leases can be structured various ways as well.
Right. And then what kind of longevity on, on these vehicles, do you know?
Well, the, I mean, I would say if the new ones are an improvement over the... Well, the, I mean, I would say if the new ones are an improvement over the old ones.
You've got, no, he, he just kept pointing, I didn't know if he wanted to speak to that.
I was just going to say, if the new ones are in any kind of improvement over the old ones, you see how old the old ones are. So you're making with this free cash, an investment into a durable capital asset that will serve the town for fifteen to twenty years. I can think of worse things that'll happen with that free cash if it just sits there. Because everyone's got ideas of what to do with it.
I mean, I know, in talking to chairman and town administrator, this is a big ask, but we're replacing trucks that are twenty-five years old. I'm concerned about getting through the next winter with the fleet I currently have, and I'm down one already. If one of these other trucks that we're trying to talk about tonight goes down, we're going to cancel a lot of school, we're going to have a lot of problems paving, plowing these streets. I'm not getting the contractors that we need anymore. The reason why we're going up to the ten-wheelers, as the chairman said, was because we learned in 2015 that the bigger the trucks are, the more we can push off the roads. The nineteen ninety-eight was through the blizzard, went through the blizzard of oh-four, oh-five, twenty fifteen winter. These trucks are putting in time. Now, like I said, I know it's a big ask, but as the highway superintendent, my concern is next year, I don't have the, the equipment or the repair, repair parts to get us through the next snowstorm. So if, if the FinCom or town meeting decides this is too much of an ask, we're going to have serious concerns maintaining the roads the way we've historically done them. And another thing I want to bring up, too, is, once again, when Mark is doing a thing about replacing his pumper trucks, and we all feel the need for those trucks. In the wintertime, these dump trucks that we're trying to talk about tonight, in my opinion, are more important than a pumper at that year, because my, those, these trucks will clear the roads, so his trucks have the ability to get where they're going. My biggest concern, it's always been my biggest concern, is that during the wintertime, I get a call from the chief or the police chief, we need to get emergency vehicles to a household, and we need these roads open now. Now, we were able to do it in 2015, there was a baby born on Route 27, we were able to do that. I want to be able to continue to do that. By replacing these, these four trucks, we have the ability to do that, but let's make no mistake about it, it's still going to be a tough next winter, and if some of these get pushed back another year, another two winters.
So, if we replace all four trucks in one year, I guess my fear would be they would all stop working around the same time. So is there a higher risk for, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we shouldn't buy them, I'm just wondering if, as the years go, let's say we buy them and the years go by, would we want to consider potentially, I don't know, trading them in, selling them earlier to then change the schedule of when we purchase new trucks?
So if I could just jump in, you know, there are, there, we're buying, we're buying three different types of vehicles with this four purchase, four vehicle ask, we're buying two ten-wheelers, a six-wheeler, and a one-ton. Those, ideally, imagine that. It'll take me about four months to figure it out.
Does he remember your name, though?
No, I don't.
So close.
Those have life expectancies that are a little bit different, right? So, I, I think as we work our way forward twenty years from now, we'll, we should be looking at a, a more, spreading, excuse my French, we're spreading out the, spreading out those, those truck purchases, so we don't have a spike of, you know, one point one million dollars.
And that's what I was trying to avoid.
Absolutely should. The last thing I guess I'd say, and I don't think Paul's trying to do this, I don't think anybody's trying to make this a scare tactic, you know, at all. This is, in my mind, a prudent way to, to utilize an asset that we have to provide the, the department, trucks that are reliable, but as importantly, I think, at least short term, there's an opportunity to save upwards of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars just on the cost of inflation if these, if these trucks, if all these trucks were to be deferred. So, nobody likes to spend money, I get it, but at the end of the day, having looked at this a lot of different ways with the capital planning committee and with Mr. Basler, I think this makes the most sense.
I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with them, with the amount of time it did take in nineteen ninety-eight, if you haven't had more issues with it, and those things, they're not, you know, they're not going through easiness, it's not like you're driving them on a summer, a summer day, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's salt and sand.
These trucks go through the worst of our weather for multiple hours in a whack. But I was also asked, as a resident, how would I like to see these paid for? If we have the cash, I'd rather pay cash, because as we know, finance charges add up six percent every year. So I think the total of these trucks are about one point one million. If we finance them, that's going to be one point three, one point four million. So, just save some doll, and the good thing about staggering these trucks' delivery dates is we don't pay a dime until a truck is physically sitting in this yard. So if we decide to pay cash, the truck gets here, I have my admin do the bill, and that's when we start paying for the trucks. The vendor has told me, you will not see two trucks within the same week. The two trucks we just got last two months, we ordered back in July of twenty-two. I got one truck back in early March, and I just got the tractor at, at the beginning of April. So it's taken that long to get it, and by staggering it, like he said, we can leave the money in the bank, get higher interest for it for the time until we need it.
I think just also to illustrate it, the, the cheaper of the trucks, which I believe was the one-ton dump truck, you have to look at, the trucks are different tools in the toolbox, and they get used for different applications. You wouldn't send a ten-wheeler out to pick up a dead deer. I don't think you'd use it to go pick up road barricades or whatever they're doing for election days and all that other kind of work. So the smaller, cheaper trucks will take on the miles faster, they'll be replaced sooner, but it's the trucks that we're really investing the most dollar value into that will serve us the longest. So I'm not too concerned about trucks all breaking down the same year. I have asked that question to my own committee. I believe that in the future, I mean, you've known which of your trucks were in trouble for years and years, or which ones are headed that way. If we're in a good position way down the road, we should, we should be looking at whether it makes sense to auction a few off or trade them in and replace before we get to this point.
Is there, I, and I, I don't have a problem, I support doing this, but is there any concern with what you mentioned with the federal regulations changing us being in a situation in ten or fifteen years with these trucks that we can't get parts for them anymore? Because we chose to get them prior.
Like any, any car, even cars or trucks, the older they are, the harder it is to get parts, right? The trucks that we, if we get these trucks, we order them, they'll have the components as of 2025, 2035, 2040, that could all change.
Also, these trucks are made by Ford, Freightliner, and Western Star. I don't foresee those companies being in any kind of financial trouble, do you, Paul?
No, yeah, Freightline's been around for a long time, Western Star's been around.
No, and again, it was more just around the regulations, if, if this, sometimes they put regulations in and then, you know, ten years from now, it's, this is your grace period of ten years, and then all of a sudden, you can't get anything until you switch over. That's, that was my.
I think once, once they make the emissions changes and they change the motor from that year forward, that will probably come into play. But if these trucks don't have those same emission regulations, then they won't be subject. Usually, they don't, they grandfather the older trucks.
Yep.
Because we see some changes with this fleet that we weren't subject to because of the age of the trucks.
What are the most common parts that you have to replace? Are they typically engine parts, or are they like starters, alternators, things like that?
We've replaced starters, we've replaced pumps, we've replaced alternators. It's bolt-on parts, but the big issues now are the hoses, twenty-five-year-old hydraulic hoses are fragile. The miles on the transmission, like I said, these trucks are out in the worst part of the storms for long periods of time. So unlike people's cars where we park them in the driveway, all that calcium, all that salt we put on the roads to fight the ice are getting inside the frames, any opening areas, the wiring on these things. When they come out of the dealership, they are solid, they have watertight connectors, but trucks that get this old, the wires start breaking, you get shorts. We spent over eleven hundred dollars last fall sending out a truck for electrical issue. So that's what, that's what usually maintains going. The average truck life in a DPW or a highway is somewhere between fifteen and eighteen years per vehicle. Now, if we had mild winters like we had the last two years, we might be able to extend those. If we have more winters like 2015 or 2004, where we're out every two, two days, you're going to shorten those lifespan. And the chemicals that we use to get the ice to stay off the roads are very corrosive to vehicles. And although my employees, every storm, when the temperature's thirty-two degrees outside, we'll rinse the trucks, they don't get under them until the end of the season, and we have a pressure washer that gets underneath them and gets it all, but it sits there for a while, and over time, it gets hard, and that's what happens.
Do you want a motion?
Actually, we have two, I have a couple of other questions just for Paul. One question is, is fifty thousand dollars really enough for engineering? I mean, I'm not looking to make this capital budget bigger.
Well, what's going on, what's been going on with the last fifty thousand, being the town planner, I'm trying to create some little engineering projects going for sidewalk extensions, we use some of it for this in this section up here. Excuse me, she's looking for some money, some seed money from engineering to help with the Lake Street shared path. So, fifty thousand is a lot of money, but if for engineering, it's not. I mean, we just signed an engineering contract for drainage job for a hundred and ten. So although it's, in my opinion, a lot of money for engineering, it's not, but it's at least something that we didn't have prior.
Okay, all right. Well, we have another piece of this agenda item, which is to also accept the five-year capital plan, so did anyone have any questions on the five-year summary as being presented to us this evening? Think of it like a report that we're accepting.
Can I just ask a question? Are there any more OPERA funds for any of these type of projects at all? Because I know we had it for three years, and it's kind of frustrating to see that some of these, like, like HVAC things cannot be funded.
It has to be allocated before the year end, right?
All of the projects, all of the OPERA funds have been allocated to projects. The last of it was done probably two months ago. If we're fortunate enough to have Plowmouth County provide some additional OPERA monies that other communities didn't spend, like we did last time, we will absolutely apply for those for some purpose. Chances are, it won't be vehicles, it'll be something.
I'm saying, like, just a couple of the other things that they were looking for is, like, I'm just saying, like, maybe helping with, I don't know, I don't know, some HVAC stuff or, like, something that we could use for that, I don't know. Like, you know, I know we were talking about the streets, trees, and parks, like, it's something that we could use as part of that. It seems like some of these things would be in the capital plan.
I think some of the OPERA funds are used to replace a chiller at one of the schools, is that correct?
So there are chillers that have been replaced, there's been, I can't remember the scope of the project. There's about nine hundred thousand dollars on one of the schools for HVAC upgrades or replacements, so we try, you know, we, I think the OPERA funds have been used for a variety of things, but a lot, if, if we can use, if we can fund some of these capital items, if additional OPERA funds can become available, we absolutely will take that advantage of applying for those and bringing it to the board for your consideration.
I think you've done a great job of trying to figure out what's most important, and you've done a great job of figuring it all out. I think it's fairly difficult to, just, everything's important, right? I mean, and you all have done a great job of doing your due diligence, you've gone there, you've seen it. I have not gone down there and gone underneath the trucks, I'm sorry.
I do that for you, you don't have to.
But, but I think it's important to know that, like, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to do, is to see where the money can go. And yes, I think, like you said, everybody wants a piece, and they go, well, we, we have an extra three million dollars, like, let's spend it.
And we often, we often get accused of kicking the can, right? So we get that, we get that feedback a lot, and I think this is the opposite of that.
I mean, Paul doesn't kick the can, Paul has done a great job.
He's tried not to kick the can, he's been forced to kick the can.
Yeah, he's, he's one of those departments that I think, he comes when he needs it. I mean, honestly, Paul, you come when you need it, you're not one to, and I think most of our departments, you know, if you need it, you come to us and you ask, and you don't usually ask for a lot, so.
I try not to, because as a taxpayer, I don't want my tax to go up either, but like you said, I ask for when I need it, and like he said at the start of his presentation is, we're talking about equipment, but the big issue is the condition of the pavement, too. And, you know, the fiscal stuff we have in forward, us, police, fire station, school stuff, but, you know, being the highway superintendent, my, my purview is roads, and we're going to need some money going forward down the road to fix these roads.
You mean, like, whenever someone puts a pole in our sidewalk? Sorry.
All right, so I guess if you guys are ready, we can, I can entertain a motion to move this article to the warrant and accept the plan.
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the fiscal year 2025 capital improvement plan presented this evening by the Capital Planning Committee and move the supporting warrant articles to the town meeting warrant.
Second.
Sorry, I didn't misspeak, I said five-year plan, it's just the one-year plan. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Heath.
Okay.
There was a lot of homework that went into that. You guys did a great job.
That was four meetings of discussion on the trucks alone.
Yeah, it was impressive research.
About to mention prior years, as I said, climbing under the trucks, climbing on the trucks, going to see the new trucks, hearing about the existing trucks which are rapidly aging.
I was going to say, bring pictures, pictures of rust, and it always helps.
Okay, so moving along, we have our first additional item, which is to review and possibly vote on the town meeting articles. So we have a draft, that was also in the packet for anyone at home from the website. So this has been updated to include the votes taken by Finance Committee at their April third meeting, and the warrant is still open, so it could possibly change, but I don't expect major changes until, I mean, between now and our next meeting, right? We think we're pretty close.
The only, there, I think, everything that we're aware of has been placed in here, Town Council reviewed and returned. His revisions to me today, those are, have been incorporated into the copies that are at your tables. That was done late this afternoon, so they might, there's going to be, those changes aren't going to be reflected with the warrant that's been online, but we will be updating the warrant online tomorrow. But again, there was, there was really nothing substantive there, it was, it was, again, some legalese and language changes, but the intent of the articles haven't changed at all.
So if we vote on any of these articles tonight, the only thing I would ask is if there are any changes between the vote and our next meeting that somehow redlined, so that we can just see it.
You have to reconsider them, yep, absolutely.
All right, so, do you guys want to go have Keith walk us through what's on this warrant and see if people feel ready to vote, or whether they want to do it on the 23rd?
We have nothing to have in agreement.
Yes, no, maybe?
Let's do it.
All right, do you want to walk us through?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So, Article one is, is something the FinCom has already voted for, it's to fund two thousand nine hundred, three dollars and sixty cents in prior year unpaid bills. There were three specific bills that were not included in fiscal '23's budget. That information's in the article.
Do you want to vote on these individually?
We can. Yeah, we can.
Okay, so I move.
Does anyone have questions, though? Just no? Good, makes sense to me.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article one.
Second. Second.
Everything I'll do wrong, there you go.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to move it at town meeting? Don usually like this one.
I do, sure, I'll do it. Four years running now.
Yeah, might as well.
I take the hard ones.
Perfect. Okay, Article two.
Article two also was, was approved by FinCom. The Article two is to return six hundred thousand dollars to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Kingston received a Smart Growth Grant that was part of the 40R rezoning back in 2007. Because that rezoning never occurred, that six hundred thousand dollars is not eligible to be spent. I did ask the gentleman if we could use it in some other way.
Can we just keep?
And he indicated in the negative. So this would authorize the town to return that money to the Commonwealth.
Any questions?
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to move it?
I'll take it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who's it?
Eric, I think.
Thank you.
Article three is to supplement the fiscal '24 departmental appropriations. There are two departments who are in need, who are requesting funding, supplemental funding to their fiscal '24 budget. The first one is the Veterans Department, they're asking for thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. The thirty-five thousand dollars is, would be to fund benefits to veterans who are eligible to receive those benefits. The Veterans. The Veterans Department has seen an uptick in the number of veterans coming in seeking, uh, assistance. Uh, so this funding would provide, uh, the Veterans Department enough money to get through fiscal twenty-four. It's, and the money is coming out of, we're proposing the money come out of, um, a, uh, unexpendated grant, I'm sorry, unexpendative warrant article from two thousand twenty-two, uh, from conservation.
And then, um, Fire Department?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me continue, I apologize. The, uh, the second department looking for supplemental appropriations, the Fire Department. In the memo I provided to you, um, today, Chief Douglas provided me an accounting of, uh, where he stands, uh, with his fiscal twenty-four budget. The primary reason, and it may be the sole reason frankly, uh, that he's seeking these additional supplemental funds is he's had, uh, a number of firefighters who have been injured on duty and have missed from a few shifts to a few months worth of shifts. Right now, he believes he's gonna finish the fiscal year with a, with a, an over expended balance in just the sick leave line item of a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. And believes that right now, um, his wage lines will be over expended by just about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Uh, Chief Douglas has done a couple of things, uh, he's gonna be saving some money upwards of seventy thousand dollars in other line item savings. He's requesting fifty thousand dollars to supplement his fiscal twenty-four budget, uh, because of the overages in, uh, the unexpected, unexpected overages in sick time. Uh, he's also, I think it's important to recognize, um, the day shifts when they run down a person, uh, the, the Fire Chief and the Deputy Fire Chief will be providing, um, will be in the field responding to calls for service, which they typically aren't, uh, during the daytime during the week when they're here, to assist the on-shift crews, um, saving some additional funds, certainly saving some additional funds there as well. So he's trying, I believe, uh, as best he can to, to find ways to not have to ask for this supplemental appropriation. But because of the extent of the injuries, number of injuries, we just, there's no way to, to cover the entire over, over expenditure.
One of the questions that Finance Committee had when they discussed this request was whether it could be funded from budget, other, other lines within the budget. And I think that this memo really helps explain that, so I think that's very helpful. And, um, they also asked what chapter one eleven F meant, and I believe that's leave with pay for an incapacitated employee.
Mm-hmm, injured, injured on duty for a firefighter, basically.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I can do it, unless someone else wants to. Alright.
Article four, um, has been approved by the, uh, the FinCom, the, um, excuse me, the wastewater department is seeking, seeking a supplemental appropriation for fiscal twenty-four as well, uh, in the amount of six, just over six hundred thousand dollars, six hundred and one thousand dollars. This is being funded by unexpended prior year town meeting articles to address the fiscal twenty-four shortfall. So they, um, the Sewer Department is not collecting the revenues they anticipated to collect in their, in their, the operation of fiscal twenty-four budget. Some of that, uh, I, I think happens to, is due to the fact that, um, uh, with the, um, stoppage of any new water connections, the thought was that paying for the debt for the new tank at the wastewater facility would come from new connections and new users, those aren't happening. Uh, so I, I think that's certainly part of the need for the six hundred thousand dollars. But that's the request of, of the wastewater commissioners.
So I have a question, typically wastewater sewer, and just correct me if I'm wrong, my assumption is it's typically the users who are funding most of this, but this would be taking, basically taking, no.
No, so these articles are wastewater articles, correct?
These are specifically wastewater articles, the, it's, it's so completely self-supportive, so, um, it's not being impacted. Property taxpayers are not being asked to fund anything here.
Got it.
I would say, just as a note, it would probably be helpful for the town meeting information packet if we say what exactly those articles were from those, only because I think people will have that same question, because I had the same questionnaire. So if it said, you know, annual town meeting, May fifth, Article seven, wastewater, blah, 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 that would be helpful.
Carol has her hand up.
Oh. Carol?
Oh, excellent.
Hello.
Hello.
They were for the universal unforeseen sewer improvements. And they don't anticipate them, uh, the whole six hundred thousand having to be used for the budget. They're just closing those articles, it goes back to their retained earnings.
Okay.
So we'll include the, we'll include the articles, specific articles and the amounts of money coming from each one of those articles in the warrant, so people are aware of where they came from.
Yeah, and that way they don't think that it's coming from other places.
Right, yep, happy to do it.
Okay, any other questions, concerns?
Does somebody else wanna make a motion? I don't wanna hug them all.
You got it, you got it.
To move favorable action on.
Actually, she said it makes it easy for her if I do hug them all.
Okay, go for it, Eric.
Alright, so I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's five, zero, zero. And there was, um, it may, maybe worth just noting, they did discuss briefly at Finance Committee that the sewer rates will be going up. So just to prepare people. Okay, alright, Article five.
Who's taking that one? Did somebody say?
Oh, that's sewer.
That's sewer question.
We don't have to do that one.
Got it, good.
So Article five is all of the community preservation funding requests? I'm sorry, no, they're not, I apologize.
This is just the Opochinski wells, yeah.
This is, uh, a community preservation funding request for the replacement of the, of the existing Opochinski irrigation wells. The reason this is being placed up in the front of the article, in front of the warrant is we're asking it to be a fiscal twenty-four supplemental appropriation, um, rather than a fiscal twenty-five, which will allow the Recreation Department to start the project the day after town meeting, frankly.
And as much as people don't like the rain, it's been helpful with the wells not being in commission.
We, yeah, right now, the existing wells, I think as the board is aware, are not operational. We cannot irrigate at all, so the thought was, if we can get this approved in the middle of May, um, it will save us a month and a half of waiting until July first. So that's the difference.
And something else that may be worth mentioning, I believe that some of the local sports organizations are also providing some supplemental funding to this request, so. Okay.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article five.
Second.
Do we anticipate any of these changing numbers? Like, should we be specific and say Article five, Opochinski wells, or it's five?
I don't think you need to.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, so that's five, zero, zero, and that's the Community Preservation Committee that's moving that one. Article six, we are skipping.
Yep. Article six is, is the operating budget for the town. Article seven is the Water Enterprise Fund Budget. Uh, there was a vote taken by the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, uh, for this article. It's for the operations of the Water Department for fiscal twenty-five.
As well as some capital projects, it looks like.
There's some capital projects in there, uh, primarily to fix the, um, repair of the, the Water Department building on Elm Street, uh, that's in need of some repairs as well as some tank maintenance. They are, um, utilizing two hundred and forty thousand dollars in unexpended articles. Uh, you can see the articles and the, uh, the dates and the totals of those articles, um, in the article itself.
That's great. Okay, any questions? Nope?
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Five, zero, zero, alright.
Article six, um, Article eight, excuse me, Article eight is the, uh, water, the Water Commissioners are asking to, uh, asking for authority, uh, to use eminent domain to potentially acquire a piece of property that they have been seeking now for the better part of three years, uh, for a, a new well that would allow them to provide more water and new customers and whatnot.
From my understanding, I'm watching their recent meetings, the situation has changed a bit since last time. So there's a little bit of some sibling disputes over how and when to sell the assets. So my recommendation to the Water Department would be if we could get a letter from the one, the family member who's in support of selling us the land, that might go a long way. Town meeting has spoke very loudly and clearly that they're not a big fan of eminent domain. But I think if we had something saying they want to sell it, I think that would help.
And I, and I, you know, yes, I, I agree with everything you just said, and frankly, I think at this point, it's becoming more and more imperative, we, we acquire that property sooner rather than later. So it, I, I wasn't all that excited about eminent domain in the past. I think now with the situation as it is, um, it may be a tool for the Water Commissioners to use if they need to, hopefully they won't, because it has become down to some sort of a family dispute that hasn't been resolved yet, that hopefully will be, um, without having to.
They've also had, and as someone who was against this, they've also had now two years?
That's right.
To get this settled?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I spoke about against it as well and, and, uh, I will be voting in favor of this now. I mean, it's been two years, it's very important, and, uh, yeah. I mean, I don't think the town takes it lightly.
Nope.
And it definitely will still see some interesting, we'll see what happens on the floor, but at this point, we've, we've exhausted a lot. This at least gives them the tools to move forward if they can't figure it out, yeah.
And I want to also point out, the Water Commissioners were also talking about this. We have a limit as to how much water we are allowed to take out of the ground with the existing wells. And the only way we can get more water, it's not because there isn't enough water, it's we're just not allowed to take it. So if we, if we have another well, we are allowed to take more water, which the reason folks can't water their lawns on specific days is more because the DEP says we can't get our water. So I just think that's an, it's an important piece of the puzzle, it's not that there isn't water, we're just not allowed to get it.
And, and we all know water's very important, it's been a big topic, it comes into almost every conversation that we have about anything right now, so.
We've done our due diligence, and I do believe that this, this was given to, at the beginning, it was, the town got this, you know, as somebody saying yes to this. It wasn't like we were taking it from somebody, we were, we were really working with that person for two years. So it's, we've been doing our due diligence to try to make this as.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend the approval of Article eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'd still like to see that letter.
I'll, I'll ask for it, I'll actually ask for it.
Well, if anything, it just helps on the floor.
I just, it's, it's honestly, it's, it's a hard thing for me to vote in favor of, so. Okay. And that's the Water Commissioners. Okay, Article nine.
Article nine is the wastewater budget, uh, for fiscal twenty-five. Has been approved by, or supported by FinCom and Capital Planning.
Right, so there's some, um, capital there too, correct? The, um, what was it?
Do we, just out of curiosity, do we know what to know? Or no, sorry, that's an abstain, right?
That's an abstain, correct, that was an abstain.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, five, zero, zero, okay.
Article ten is, uh, the article for fiscal twenty, the fiscal twenty-five budget for our renewable energy. Again, approved by FinCom.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article ten.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and Sheila, you want this one?
Sure.
I will say it will probably go on the consent agenda, because this is one that doesn't get.
I should have picked it.
I knew it.
Okay.
Article, Article eleven, I'd like to, I'd like to, before I start, I guess, make the board aware, I'd like to make a change in the amount being requested for the Recreation Revolving Account. Excuse me, there were, the, the revolving account for Recreation right now stands at, uh, at five hundred thousand dollars. The Recreation Director had asked for seven fifty, and it may, and in all likelihood, we'll be coming in front of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, uh, to request an increase in the fiscal twenty-four revolving fund amount approved, which was, um, five hundred thousand dollars. Excuse me, because with more programs being offered, uh, more revenues being collected, um, the Recreation Director anticipates that we'll, we will collect, um, five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in recreation fees. There was, there was a request initially to move it to seven fifty, there was some concern raised, I think, I think it's fair to say, at the Finance Committee about moving it to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I, I've had conversations with the Recreation Director, she anticipates fiscal twenty-five revenues will be six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. So if the board would be willing to, um, support a reduction in the seven fifty to either six seventy-five or seven hundred thousand dollars. The Recreation Director has provided, uh, the, a brief breakdown of, you know, what the costs are associated and the revenues that we collect for, for the athletic complexes and, and what's being, uh, collected and paid for through programs. Uh, as she mentioned, um, they, they continue to increase the number of programs that are offered. So this is not costing the taxpayer anything to do this, uh, it's simply just trying to increase that maximum amount authorized.
So I think part of, sorry, I think part of Finance Committee's, well, they, so this, um, they actually deferred it to four seventeen, so there's a vote count here.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't voted on this yet.
Yeah, there's a vote count here in our, in our board, but, um, they had, they deferred it because there, I think their objection was more they wanna know where the money is going. So what's the money being spent on after it comes in for these various programs? And I, I mean, I know summer camps, they provide T-shirts and they pay for camp counselors and, and things like that. But I think they wanted to see more of a list of how that money is spent, um, and I think that was kind of the request. I don't know that seven fifty was necessarily the problem, I think it was more they wanted to see it and have more.
Well, they, I, I believe their concern was that in a revolving fund, they have absolutely no authority over it.
Sure.
And I understand that and I respect that, uh, but, you know, it is tracked, it does get audited, um, annually, um.
I have a question, so if someone's teaching a program through the Rec Department, like a golf pro says, I'm gonna run it through here, the golf pro gets paid by, so they may charge a hundred dollars for the lessons. The, the way I understand it, the Rec Department keeps like ten percent or something, and they pay out the person who's providing that training. Maybe not all of the programs, but I know that that's what they've done in the past.
I mean, and here it says, kind of, the Article eleven, like, it says that's what it complex expenses go up about thirty thousand from twenty twenty-four, then the programs went up about eighty thousand.
But I think they just wanted to see, my impression was they wanted to see more, more transparency on what is coming in and what is going out. I'm not saying they have oversight over it, I get it.
Sue is, is, is trying to, is putting together, um, some information that will hopefully satisfy the questions that were raised by FinCom. To Eric's point, um, that golf pro, you know, they'll charge, he'll, he'll charge the program a hundred dollars, and they'll collect, you know, two hundred dollars. Well, the, the hundred dollar expense and two hundred dollar revenue both go into the revolving account. There's no impact to, to taxpayers.
Right.
Same thing with the summer program and everything else they run over there. They're just continuing to expand the number of programs that they offer and, um, so they need more money to be able to, uh, be authorized to expend and collect.
Do we want to hold off on this?
Hold on, let's see what Carol has to say.
I just wanted to say, um, some of the other expenses that the revolving fund covers is the athletic field complex maintenance, you know, a lot of the electricity, that sort of thing. So that two hundred dollars is not, you know, the one hundred dollar net profit, that is not really one hundred dollars. It, it goes towards the maintenance and, um, you know, making sure that the fields are operational and, so, you know, and safe.
Yeah, I mean, if, if folks wanna wait till our next meeting, until, I mean, Finance Committee's meeting on the seventeenth, and they'll discuss this further, and then we'll have additional information from the, from the Director of Parks and Rec, so.
Sounds good.
That's fine, so let's defer it.
Article twelve is, is to establish a revolving fund for the, for the Board of Health. Uh, our, our health agent, uh, in fiscal twenty-four has started providing, uh, educational opportunities for, uh, local businesses, uh, to keep them, and this. for, uh, local businesses, uh, to keep them, in this case, uh, case surf save, surf safe?
Surf save.
Surf save.
Uh, thank you, certified. So rather than going out and, uh, having to get a, uh, to get educated in a certification through, uh, a for, for-profit organization, uh, what our health agent is doing, because she has the licenses to do so, is provide some of those classes, uh, provide the, provide the materials that are needed, uh, and charge a fee to cover, uh, her time and the time of, of the materials. So, uh, we've been able to cover it for fiscal twenty-four with some creative accounting, but we'd like to do it more appropriately, I guess, in, in fiscal twenty-five and establish this, please.
So if this is approved at town meeting, uh, would it then go in future years into the revolving fund list?
So the way, we, we've worded, the state of Massachusetts, and Carol can correct if I'm wrong, but the state of Massachusetts, a few years ago, provided, um, changes to state law on a variety of things, one of which was revolving funds. Basically saying if you pass this article and the article, um, to see if, if the, uh, so the article says to see if the town will vote to authorize and approve the limits on annual expenses of each revolving loan fund during any fiscal year. What that does is if it's approved, it eliminates having to bring the revolving fund article forward again unless there's a change in the amount of money or a change in the purpose. So you.
Why don't we do that for all the other ones?
We, so we will.
Oh, okay.
That's what the language, that's, the language in Article eleven.
I see.
Uh, will allow, will allow in, in our two thousand twenty-five annual town meeting warrant not to include any of these revolving things unless there's a change in the amount or the, or the specifics of why we're looking to spend them.
So in this case, if we had done that in the past, the only, the only one would be recreation, because it's changed.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
Now, would it be free classes or would we, we be making any money off these people getting, taking these courses? Or would it be like a free, because it's like ten thousand dollars obviously to, to tab the classes, but I, would we make money off of this? Would the businesses be, be bringing money in?
Yeah, so, so let's just say for example.
That's a revolving town to pay for things associated with.
So, so what she did was she charged, you know, say it was thirty dollars to buy the materials, she may have charged thirty-five or forty or fifty, whatever it was. Uh, so there'll be a small profit frankly, but I mean, uh, it'll be mu, the costs associated with these programs will be much less than they would have been in other, uh, locations that offer these classes. So it's a great opportunity for some of our local businesses to get the certifications they needed, low cost. And, and frankly, it, it improves the relationship between the town and these businesses by providing these.
And also on their time, which, you know, uh, we, we do sort of say, you know, you have to go outside of your business or define the time to do it. So doing that is part, part of that, I think it's really, really awesome if they're trying to do that.
Yep.
And I think, well, I just want to mention, I think the finance committee, after coming off the spirited discussion about the revolving funds, that's where you got your four-two-one vote, is there was a couple people in very high opposition to the revolving fund concept. So whether you like that or not, that's I think where I was getting from that conversation.
So I, I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article twelve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Tyler, you're the only one without an article so far. Do you want this one? You don't have to take it, someone else can.
I can take it.
Dawn's gonna take it.
We don't want to overextend Tyler.
All right, so Dawn. The warrant meetings are always interesting.
So the, uh, the next, the next, um, two or three are annual transfers that are made out of free cash into, uh, savings accounts basically. Uh, this one's a transfer to the employment liability reserve account. We're looking to increase this, uh, to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars because they're, uh, this is funded at, I think, a cap right now of a hundred thousand dollars. And, um, good or bad, we've had a number of longer-term employees who are retiring or leaving employment. We expect maybe others, uh, next year. So we're seeking to increase this limit to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to address those more expensive employees who are leaving and the fact that right now the current balance is zero in that fund.
And that a hundred and fifty thousand is not reflected, is not reflected in any of the department budgets?
No.
And it is based on an anticipated number that we will need?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, just, I had a finance committee vote of seven zero zero from their last meeting, so you might want to check that. I think they voted on that. Carol, do you still have that? Okay.
I could take this one.
Yes, they voted seven zero zero.
Seven zero zero, okay, thank you.
So I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article thirteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Tyler, you said you want that one?
Sure.
That will probably also go on the consent agenda.
Oh, no.
The, uh, the next is to transfer a hundred thousand dollars into the, uh, other post-employment health insurance liability fund. This hundred thousand dollars has transferred, has been transferred typically in this, in this amount for a number of years uh, to, uh, try to create a fund that, um, addresses the cost, post-employment benefits, of offering health insurance to retired, to retired, uh, employees.
Any questions? No? Okay.
So I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article fourteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And who wants to move that one?
That's FinCom.
Oh, finance committee, great, even better. They're probably also gonna be on the consent agenda.
Uh, Article fifteen is a stabilization fund. Again, typically a hundred thousand dollars placed in that stabilization fund. Right now, we have a balance of three point one million dollars in that. Uh, it's a, it's frankly a savings account, something were to happen, um, that was significant in town, uh, the, we could go to town meeting and ask for some of that money to be withdrawn. FinCom passed a five, seven, nothing.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article fifteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, finance committee moves that one.
Article sixteen is transfer, transfer of the capital stabilization fund. Again, uh, the same amount as it has been over the last few years, a hundred thousand dollars. It was approved by FinCom, seven, nothing.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article sixteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's five zero zero, and that's finance committee.
Article seventeen is a transfer into the municipal building insurance fund. This is coming from the ten thousand dollars, which is the typical amount, uh, coming from free cash, uh, for deductibles and things of that nature for when a claim is made, um, on a town piece of property.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article seventeen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's five zero zero, and that's also finance committee.
The Article eighteen is to, is to establish an opioid mitigation special revenue fund. And I know this is confusing in its accounting, so I apologize. Uh, a year ago, there really wasn't, uh, a lot of, there, there had not been a determination where this opioid money that each municipality is receiving should go. Initially, we were, we were collecting money in fiscal twenty-three, I think, uh, that, and that money went into free cash. At last year's annual town meeting, we moved the amount of money that we had collected, uh, in opioid mitigation, um, funds from free cash to a reserve account. Sometime in the last year, um, the Department of Revenue established guidelines uh, for how this opioid money is supposed to be accounted for.
Do you, do you even say, oh, what, we tell you how to use it now?
Well, so now they're saying it, it belongs in a special revenue fund. So what we are doing now with, with this article is moving it from a reserve fund, closing that reserve fund and moving it to a special revenue fund. The opioid money is money that we collect on a quarterly basis from a number of different, um, pharmaceutical chains, um, as part of the opioid settlement. And those funds can only be used for specific purposes that will, you know, improve, um, you know, the op, I don't want to say improve the opioid use, that's not the right term.
I think it was like education.
Education, so whether it be the fire department, the police department, the, the school department, the board of health, um, they would have access to these funds.
Can they use it to buy Narcan?
I think they probably could. I could double check, but, um, again, if it's.
Sounds like there's a very specific detailed list now of how that money can be.
There is, so now this, this should eliminate our need to have warrant articles on where to place this opioid money.
That's just, that's just horrible that they.
So I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article eighteen.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I, I would take this as long as somebody.
Gives you the language.
Yeah, or could help answer questions.
In the, um, also in the finance committee meeting from last week, if you watched that recording, Carol and also Mary McKinnon were talking about this with finance committee and they provided some very helpful information.
It's really just fixing the issue of where we needed to go in the first place, really.
Yeah, the proper accounting for the funds that we receive, that's really all it is. Article, Article nineteen is the capital, uh, equipment, uh, project funding for, uh, that was discussed this evening by, uh, the capital planning chair to, uh, to fund the, the different, the, the eight different, um, projects, including the four trucks, uh, for fiscal twenty-five.
I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article nineteen.
Second.
Sorry, can I modify that and say all, all eight proj, project, nope, all fourteen projects?
Which are, which the, the second page, and I apologize for not mentioning it. It, we have, uh, six leases right now, um, as was mentioned, are in various years of payoff. Um, fiscal twenty-five and fiscal twenty-six, we, we, we will stop being responsible for, we'll, the, the latter truck will be, will be funded in the last two years of its lease by, um, a developer, uh, contribution to that truck in years twenty-seven and twenty-eight, um, and some of these other leases will be coming off in the next couple of years as well. But right now, we have six existing leases with a total lease payment of seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars as part of this article.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
There's nothing that says, uh, wrote on here, is it?
It's all right here, so they're, each project has its own vote.
Because we're not gonna do that.
Well, we don't need to, I don't think, unless someone, unless someone wants to go differently on any of these projects. Does anyone, or do we, everybody okay moving them all at once? Okay. All right, so Eric made the motion to, um, move favorable action on all fourteen projects in the Article nineteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so you have five zero zero. All righty.
Then we have, um, the equipment, I guess they, historically it's been called kind of a smaller equipment project funding, things that might not fit into the capital plan or that are repairs that weren't part of an operating budget anywhere. Uh, this year, there are ten of them, uh, that total, uh, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars, from a variety of, of various departments, from the school to the conservation department, to the fire department, um, council on aging, for rugs and things of that nature, where we're trying to get into twenty-first century elections, uh, by buying pole pads and, um, uh, voting, for lack of a better term, clickers. So when you, when you cast your vote, you're pushing a, a yes or a no button on the clicker rather than ever saying aye or raising your hand. Or, or, or singing hallelujah, um, this is a more quiet version of that.
For town meeting, you're talking about the election?
Town me, any town election, town meetings. Uh, it could be any, anything, but, so.
I'm gonna.
You don't like that?
No, I don't.
Pushing for it for a while, Tyler. I've been pushing for it for a while.
I don't like it.
I'd like to pull that out.
Well, you can vote against it too.
Um. No, 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 I pulled it, I'm saying, I'm not the whole.
I thought you meant to pull the project.
No, just the electronic voting part.
Um, just for the record, does the town clerk support that project? Okay.
So, I, I'm, I have an issue. I'm, I'm trying to make this easy for her, so I'm making all the motions. I, I really don't like that one, the, the electronic voting keypad.
Just do move favorable action and someone can second it and you can vote against it, it's fine. You can move favorable action on Article twenty, project one.
And then I can just vote against.
And then you can vote against.
I mean, I'm actually, I don't want to make it an awkward motion, so I'll do that, I'll move the board of selectmen. Yeah, go ahead.
Tyler, go ahead.
No, just to have a quick discussion, I mean, so do we know of any other, how many municipalities, like, I guess, local to us are doing that?
So, let me, maybe we can do this, how about we hold off on voting on this article tonight? I'll get you some information. Lots and lots of communities use these, but rather than guessing, I don't have an exact number, or I will, I can reach out, we can reach out to the company and get you the, the information. So if you wanted to do some checking with some of your neighboring communities that you might, where, where somebody you may know lives.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
And get their feedback, happy to like, do that.
And my, and my only objection against this, not that you guys care, but I'll tell you anyways, is I feel like people, um, I feel like our form of government, you should own, I mean, that, that's how it was started. It's not mail-in ballots, it's being there and it's.
Oh, it's still being there, but you don't have to be in the room, okay.
But nobody knows, you look around the room and you know how a vote's gonna go.
Which is part of the reason people have tried to get this in place for a number of years, because they don't feel comfortable doing that.
But I feel like that's our form of government, that's why, and it's just for me, but I'm, I'll let it go.
That's why, no, that's, that's why I'm bringing it to. Yeah. I've been, I've been, I've had plenty of discussions with Dawn about that.
So we're, we're just skipping.
We're just skipping the article, yeah, we'll do it on the twenty-third, yeah. All right, so Sampson Fund, do you want me to do this one? The Sampson Fund, Article twenty-one. Also Sampson Fund trustees met, we had more requests than we had money in the account that we can use for projects. So, um, we unfortunately were not able to fund all of the requests. Uh, even the accessible nature trail was not quite the full funding request, so they were going to do some fundraising on their own. But otherwise, I think most of these are projects that you are all familiar with. We see these most years, probably with the exception of that, um, accessible nature trail, which is over by the, will be over by the senior center. Any questions on the Sampson Fund articles? Just as a reminder, I think this is a move as is, they can't amend it on the floor.
No.
So I move the board of selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, and I have to move that one, I think, or can.
Article twenty-two is, uh, is the remainder of the, uh, community preservation fund articles. I'll go through those quickly. The, the first is to, um, is to fund the operating costs, so to speak, administrative expenses of the Sampson Fund. Moving money, moving thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars to the open space, the historic preservation of the community housing, quote-unquote buckets, funding buckets, and then to approve, uh, personal services and expenses for the year of fiscal twenty-five, in the amount of nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, so the total amount being proposed in this particular, um, request is a hundred and thirty-seven, three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay. I just want to move the first project, that first item, this is broken into many segments.
Do we, I mean, can we just vote on the whole thing?
There's a lot of stuff.
It's up to you guys.
I, I would.
Keep going, then decide, keep going and then decide?
Probably.
Okay, all right, keep talking, keep, decide when you're done.
Uh, the second or the next is to fund repairs to the Major John Bradford home. There's a description of what those repairs will be, uh, the request, the sum is, uh, fifty.
Did you do affordable housing, did I miss that?
Did I miss affordable, I did miss affordable housing, I apologize. Uh, the, the next is, is, uh, put my glasses on, the affordable housing, um, they are requesting, as they normally do, fifty thousand dollars from, um, the housing funds in the CPC. Keep going?
Yep.
The, uh, the next one is the repairs to the Major John Bradford house, uh, funding coming from, uh, historic preservations and undesigned it, in the amount of total of seventy, seventy, almost seventy-two thousand dollars. Uh, the next is appropriation to fund the advance of the Jones River Corridor protection in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, um, coming from two different, open space and, um, undesigned it. The next is, uh, to fund.
Sorry, can I ask you a question about that Jones River Corridor preserve? Sorry, can I ask you a question about that Jones River Corridor preservation?
Sure.
So, this is a purchase of land?
This is the, try to purchase.
Shouldn't capital planning have an advisory vote on the purchase of land?
Sure, we could do that.
I don't know, I thought that's what the bylaw said, but maybe I'm misunderstanding it.
You could be, you could be.
You don't know, did, did capital planning vote, no, okay.
No, we never brought that forward, but they're meeting tomorrow night, so maybe we can deal with that, so we'll deal with it before, we'll deal with it before tomorrow, before town meeting.
Okay.
Uh, the next project is to fund Calista Farm grassland in the amount of two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Next is to fund, uh, the Chimney Swift Tower Eagle Scout Project, which is to build, build a tower for Chimney Swift birds. The next is, um, to fund the rehabilitation of the Reed's Center and Graves Beach Tennis Courts.
Can I ask for clarification on that?
Sure.
So we've got a zero-four-zero from capital planning, can you speak to that? Uh, either, a microphone works.
First of all, I don't know about the Graves Beach one, that was, uh, I believe a fifty thousand dollar project for fiscal year twenty-six, I thought, or maybe twenty-seven. This one was just the Reed, uh, tennis court rehabilitation.
Okay.
Um, we had been examining the project to give it an advisory vote, uh, one member of CPC wanted us specifically to take a financial look at it. Excuse me, we've done that. Before we got around to voting, uh, on the tennis courts, the irrigation wells were, it became known to us were failing at Opecinsky. Without water, that grass will probably die in July or August, it'll be very expensive to replace, and with it being dead. Uh, the grass root system helps hold the turf soils in place, if the grass dies and you get a big washout rain later in the season, it could wash, it could destroy. The surface, it'd be incredibly expensive to repair, it'd be a disaster for everyone who uses the fields. We'd lose years of investment, I mean, we have to keep up with it, it's a lot of maintenance, but we'd lose long-term investments that have been made there. It was critical that we do that immediately, the tennis courts could be patched and made to wait. So what we did was, we decided to vote against, excuse me, against the tennis courts to put a priority on the, the, um, irrigation wells. The irrigation wells are coming up well beyond the deadline for CPC and we just wanted, you know, make it known that from. A capital planning perspective, that the, the wells were far more important than the tennis court.
So was the thinking at the time that, that CPC might only support one or the other?
If their budget only allowed one, or if they wanted to hold to their rules about deadlines or anything like that.
So given that CPC has approved both to go to town meeting.
We're, we're, we are scheduled to reconsider potentially tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, alright, so, that was, that was important to me, cause I thought if they had a capital concern about rehabilitating the tennis courts, I wanted to know what that was.
Oh, I, I have a comment, and it, and it kinda relates to the, um, vehicles that we had supported earlier. I still support them a hundred percent, but one of the things we all know is still coming is the whole school budget. You know, the elementary schools voted, FinCom was looking for one point one million in cuts, they only cut three hundred and eighty thousand. They didn't cut more because they didn't wanna, um, let any staff go, because, um, obviously that would result in larger class sizes, that sort of thing. So they cut supplies, computers, IT, replacement things, things that, like, I remember, you can cut them, but they're gonna cost you double the amount in a couple of years, so. Not really saving money, but you're saving money this year. Anyways, um, Silver Lake was meeting tonight, they may be making even more cuts than they did, um, at their last meeting. So there could be programs cut there, there could eventually, if FinCom or we don't support the budget that the schools promoted. There could be more cuts at the elementary and there could be teachers let go. So I think one of the challenges we're gonna have is there will be parents at this town meeting, most likely, to vote for their budget. One of the challenges we may run into, especially with vehicles, they're gonna say, why are you spending seven hundred thousand dollars on vehicles? I can fight for it, I can defend it, and I would, I would say, but I need to, because you made a great argument, Keith, you, everybody put out a lot of great information. We're just gonna have to repeat that at town meeting and people will need to understand, but we're gonna be bumping up against this big time in the town meeting if there's more teachers and programs being cut. So just, you know, and from tennis courts.
But to be honest, this is like, number like twenty, and the by just now before, so probably they'll be gone by then.
So, the big thing is like the tennis court, so we did the same, we dealt with the same thing at Silver Lake. We had to redo a tennis court and it was gonna be, I think rebuilding it was like two or three hundred.
Four hundred, I thought.
Maybe, yeah, and this was a while, several years ago, and we voted instead to spend like seventy-five to just repair at the time.
Might have been a different court, I think they have five.
I don't remember, so, but we ended up, again, at the time, it was tough to, to spend, to completely rebuild it, cause the number of kids that were using it versus. And the same thing with the track, similar things, but I don't wanna get too off course here.
My only comment, Eric, if I could, was, you know, it's gonna be important, I think, for everybody to be able to explain this point at town meeting, because I agree with you, depending on what happens with the school budget.
Yeah.
What about this and what about that, and unfortunately, well, I think what we're gonna have to try to educate people with is there are a number of different buckets. That some of these projects come from, that can only be spent for certain purposes. In this case, the CPC has a very narrow, uh, l- uh, range of things that they can purchase.
Right.
So if you decided to, or if the, if the, if the, if the community didn't vote to support this, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars can't go to, to.
Yeah.
Hiring two teachers or keeping two teachers.
No question.
And that's why I think it's gonna be important for people to recognize, cause you're right, there's a lot of money we're talking about here.
Yep. A lot of it is optics, people, you can tell them that, and they'll be like, yeah, but you're buying this while cutting that, and they don't understand.
Well, I mean, CPC funds, though, let's be honest, like, the volleyball courts that we never got, went to the playground. And to transfer the money, it should go back into the account to go back in.
But didn't we have to, we had to vote to have that?
Yeah, but I mean, it's just, we don't get things sometimes either, and it goes to something else, so, I mean.
Well, not without a vote, right.
Well, it still goes to something else.
Did you guys say you're reconsidering this portion?
The, the, re- tennis courts is a CPC-funded project.
Yes.
It's not coming out of capital appropriation, it's coming out of the CPC fund. So, that, that money wouldn't even be available to schools anyway.
Oh, oh, I know that, but what I, my point is, um, if you guys are meaning to, to reevaluate, should we skip this one for now?
Well, so my, my other question on that is, I don't recall the capital planning committee discussing the Graves Beach tennis courts, so that wasn't.
That's, that's supposed to be, that might be a clerical error, that's, I thought that was for next year or the year after, I can check my documents if you.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just wanted to, I didn't realize that that was on there, so that's why, I was just looking at it, okay.
If you guys want, I, I'll gladly make a motion, or if we wanna skip it, but I guess, what's the point in skipping it, I guess, if we were waiting to see you guys.
I mean, we can always reconsider if, if we change our minds later, I mean, we have another meeting, so if we vote something and we have new information in the next two weeks, we can reconsider something before the warrant gets posted.
So, I'll go ahead and move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-two, all projects.
Second.
Okay, um.
Knowing that we can reconsider this the next time we need.
Yeah, I, my only hesitations are the, the sort of advisory piece of it, I, I do wanna know.
Should we do them piece by piece?
No, it's fine, um, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Put, uh, opposed, and I'm gonna abstain, just a lack of information.
Okay.
So, once I have more information, I may, I want to look at that, but. Alright.
Article twenty-three is, uh, the Article for Elected Officials Compensation.
I would like to quadruple the Selectmen page.
That's a joke.
That's not enough.
I do wanna, can I just bring up something real, real quickly about this, in the fact that, um, which one? About the, the compensation for elected officials?
Oh, yes, Article twenty-three.
Yeah, so, um, not that I'm trying to like, say, but, um, the town clerk during the, um, years that we have elections. Has been ex- ex, like, really does above and beyond the work that they do, and I know that we usually do same amount for everybody. But I really would like to think about a stipend, not, he doesn't know about any of this stuff that I'm saying, um, a stipend for that, for even the town clerks. I know the town clerk's offices get overtime, but they, he doesn't, and I just feel like on years that we have elections, it's a thought to give.
Are there always elections?
There is.
I mean, like, but, but like, but like national elections.
Right, there are some years that have more elections.
More, sure, okay, fair.
And, and because of the, and because of the, the mandatory mail-in now, it is existentially much more work for that office. So I'm just letting you know that I, I, not that I would do anything on the floor, but I think it's something to think about as we go forward. I know we have another four years, but national elections, along with our elections, and the way that we have to mail things out. And not everybody has that moon, like, the, uh, access to whatever we need to do to do that stuff, I just think it's important to think about that in the future.
We can't modify this, can we?
No, this is, um, finance committees, and they've supported it, so six, zero, one, so. I would say for, for next year, definitely go to their meeting and advocate for what you think is right.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-three.
Second.
I think Tyler beat you. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okey-dokey.
Article twenty-four is, um, wage and personnel, uh, bylaw. Changes, um, what they recommend is, uh, that should say three point five, not three point four, so I apologize in the description. Um, they've, they've recommended a three point five percent cost of living raise for, uh, wage and personnel employees, uh, to be consistent with. The unions that are receiving the same cost of living raise. They have not voted on this yet, they have a meeting Thursday night.
And just to remind folks who aren't familiar with this, there's also, people have steps and things that are all.
Yep.
A part of that, aside from the three point five percent. Okay.
Personally, I wouldn't mind skipping this and waiting to see what FinCom says, or?
I mean, it's, you, you can if you want, I mean, it's the Wage and Personnel Board's article, so it's their proposal before town meeting.
Oh, I get you, yeah.
So they're voting up for or against wage and personnel's recommendation of three point five, and three point five is consistent with what we negotiated with the unions, so.
Yeah, okay, do you, I'll, I'll make a motion, then I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Alright, Council on Aging Needs Assessment.
I probably should have brought this up earlier to take it out of order, so I apologize to both Kathy and Mary Beth. I'm sorry, this is, this is not the one I'm talking about, so I apologize.
Kate, so this is, um, twenty-five is the Council on Aging Advisory Board's, um, request for an article for the needs assessment, right, for age and dementia-friendly Kingston.
I apologize.
So, um, I had just requested more information, which we received a lot of information in our, in our packet. Uh, we had initially voted in favor of applying for a grant to fund this survey from, best of my recollection, I'm looking at the Director on Elder Affairs, waiting for her to, okay, she's nodding. And now, uh, we did not receive that grant, so we're going before.
Town meeting.
Town meeting for free cash.
Seeking for free.
Thirty-five thousand, correct? Okay, so I think, um, what would be helpful to me is to better understand the value of the survey and kind of what. How we explain to town meeting what they're getting for that thirty-five thousand, so I don't know who wants to speak to that, I don't know if you could speak to that, or if you want.
I prefer, I prefer.
Okay, yeah, okay, that'd be great.
So, um, you were given some information, uh, in the packet earlier, uh, actually yesterday and then this morning. Um, what I tried to provide for you that would be helpful to kinda guide you through this process is, um, what the process is itself. Um, when you, we, I had come in front of you back in November of twenty-twenty-two, we had asked you to support a movement here in Kingston. Uh, to allow us to become what's called age and dementia friendly. Um, essentially what this is, is a movement that was started back fifteen years ago, and Massachusetts picked up and ran with this, uh, signed on as a state itself. About twelve years ago, and over the last ten years, somewhere close to, uh, two hundred and twenty-one communities in Massachusetts. Have either received this certification or are working toward age and/or dementia friendly. Essentially, I have said this, uh, a number of times before, but I really love this analogy. Um, what this is, is when you stop and think about, say, for example, what Weston and Sampson has been able to do for your planning department in terms of a master plan. To actually allow you to sit down and say, this is Kingston, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing, this is where we need to go. That's what this, that's what we're talking about here. The needs assessment is the very, very first step, and with that said, I gave you a copy of what the town of Situate did. On their, uh, Council on Aging Community Survey. So this is a sample of the questions that are asked, but what I think is really important to note here is that. Our survey will be what we want it to be, and my feeling is that with the information I'm currently receiving in. We're getting more interest, not just from the fifty-five-year-olds, but from the fifty to sixty-four-year-olds. And that is a major swath of people within the community, very, very large number, it's actually equal. To the number of seniors that we currently see, serve right now, which is just slightly over four thousand. So that's a significant portion of Kingston's overall population.
Is that family members or people with dementia? Is it a lot of family members or people, caretakers?
We haven't even been able to nail down the number of people, for example, though, just to give you an idea, tw- every twenty-nine seconds, someone is diagnosed with some form of dementia. Whatever that is. So, I know that in the past, the police department, the fire department, has been mandated to actually learn how to train and to work with the public. To be able to treat those individuals when they meet them and need to serve them, specifically to the purpose and know that they have that condition. The dementia piece is done side by side with the age-friendly piece. Um, the second thing that I wanted you to take a look at in there was the, it was a completed resident survey, this will give you an idea of what the questions were that were asked and the responses. I happen to have been somewhat involved when I was up on the North Shore with the city of Salem. And I brought, I gave you this example for a very specific reason, and I love it for this reason. Salem for all ages, an age-friendly action plan. What I've come to realize in the last ten years on working on this, because it's been a goal of mine wherever I've been, here in particular. To be able to, um, try to have people understand that this, this movement isn't just about seniors. This is about creating a community for those people that are here, that are going to be moving here, to be able to create the kind of. Housing, transportation, social inclusion, um, communication, public health, everything that we need for them. For example, I recently reached out to, uh, Town Administrator Hickey, and one of the ideas that is out of all of this is, I'd really love. The support to be able to put together a crisis team in this town. That is not just for our seniors, but for everybody that's going through any type of crisis, so that if they need funds, if they need help. If they need a hand up, a hand out, if they need services, if they need items. We have a group of people in place, fire, council on aging, public health, police department, members of the Board of Selectmen, whoever it is. To come together in a group to be able to decide what it is that we're going to do. It's one of the goals that when I, when I'm working right now with the, um, wage, um, uh, board, to change the outreach person. What we're trying to do is get somebody in that's a social worker, we're trying to change the qualifications in that position. So that we get somebody in that is qualified as a master social worker, clinical social worker, LICSW. Has some type of advanced degree that allows us to be able to just, instead of being reactive, be proactive. The most important thing in this town right now is to identify those individuals, be they seniors or younger, who are at risk. The, the schools have pieces in place to be able to do that, we don't have any of that. We're lucky when we catch them, we're lucky when we can help them, but for us, this, this survey is going to help not just us identify. Who they are and where they are, but it's going to help the entire town by way of being able to look at your town in a snapshot. And see where it is in, and I'm gonna tell you, this isn't gonna happen in two thousand twenty-four, because they're very busy right now. Where, say for two thousand twenty-five, where does Kingston sit two thousand twenty-five? What do we need to look at, what's our action plan, putting a group of stakeholders together that are gonna be able to come together to say. These are the things that we need to work on, we have these in place, we can do better. We have these in place, we can do better, but these are the things that we really need to look at. So this is a, when I, I, I brought that Salem up, because I really believe this is not about seniors. This is about everybody in the town of Kingston that's going to benefit from this.
So, just looking at the materials you supplied us with, it looks like that thirty-five thousand dollars gets you a survey. Not only creates the survey, but somehow gets it to the folks who need to get it. Collates that data, creates charts and whatnot, and then ultimately gives you some sort of draft plan, sort of like the master plan.
That's the, that's the action plan. That, that is your survey, and then you have your completed table with your survey results. And then at the end of the day, you have the action plan.
And does that thirty-five thousand dollars include all of those pieces?
They work with us throughout the entire process.
No, I, I get that, but that thirty-five thousand, does that cover all of those things? Like, does that pay for that?
Yes, it does.
Not just, because I was going to say, sending a survey to people, we could probably do for a lot cheaper than thirty-five thousand dollars. But the other pieces and the detailed planning.
So to your point, if I may just give you this, so the dollars needed for the needs assessment would allow us to work with the experts from the Center for Social and Demographic Research on Aging at the Gerontology Institute of the University of Massachusetts at Boston. They are dedicated to forming a collaborative participer, participatory process that will allow us to identify, understand, and prioritize needs that older residents in Kingston have, in order to establish Kingston as a place to age well. This information gathering process will inform other areas in town from a planning and development perspective, as well as serve as a snapshot in time to allow the senior center to develop strategic programs as needed and noted by residents. The process, to your point, includes document review, demographic profile, four separate community forums, three focus groups, five to six key informant interviews, and mailed surveys to all residents. And it says here, age fifty-five, but we, I've said it already, I'd like to see this be a fifty and up group of people that we're going to be talking to, which would be available both electronically and paper copies available. That process is going to take, at a bare minimum, six to nine months. We did, by the way, we did, I know you know this, but we went in front of the Sampson Committee because we too believe that, I know that they did not feel that this was within the scope of the Sampson, um, purview, if you will. But I made my case really hard, because I really do believe that, um, this really has to do with the, the betterment, the good of everybody in, in Kingston. And, um, uh, it, it's, it's different from anything that they've ever touched on before, and I could understand their reluctance. Uh, but it was said to us that, uh, perhaps the ability to make our case on town meeting floor and present this as something that, um, to the people, to help them understand what it is that we're looking to do, not just now. This isn't for me. This isn't even perhaps for you. But this is with the hope that the kids that you're raising in this community is going to have a, they're going to be having a place where they can stay and live and thrive, because the pieces have been put in place long before they needed them.
Okay. Questions?
I, I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor? All right.
Thank you very much.
Article twenty-six is, uh, to increase the senior and veteran property tax work off. Uh, a couple of years ago, the state increased the maximum, um, to fifteen hundred dollars. The thought was, last year, we would move from seven fifty to a thousand and work our way up incrementally. So this is us moving from a thousand, the suggestion is moving from a thousand to twelve hundred and fifty dollars with, uh, an article, in our likelihood, next year to, to increase to one two fifty. This article is funded through, uh, it has been funded through, and is proposed to be funded through in fiscal twenty-five through overlay. So it's not impacting directly, uh, property taxes.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-six.
Second.
So, I'm sorry, just one quick question. So, there was a question about this at the Finance Committee about the, there was tax work off, and then there was a, there was other language in the draft, I think they were looking at, about, um, it just, it was slightly, oh, the tax exemption. Is that different than the work off? Because Elaine had some questions about the exemption versus the work off.
Tax work off does not have, does not have a, uh, income limit.
Right.
And there was some discussion about that. I believe the exemption does.
Okay, because the language in here says that, to see if the town will vote to increase the amount of the local property tax exemption.
All right, I'll check.
For seniors, I just want to make sure that we're.
I'll double check.
Talking about the right thing. So we're talking, but we're really just talking about the work off.
Yes.
And there's no income there, in, limit there. Okay.
And I would take it if, I did this last year, I think.
And it's in the, um, description too. Sorry, we have to vote it.
Yeah, I got it.
Um, so Eric, and then the second was who? Sorry?
Uh, me, Tyler.
Okay, Tyler. You, who are you again? No, just kidding. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the assessors did, um, they were in favor of this as well.
Next is Article twenty-seven, the rescission of borrowing authorization. So back in two thousand and twenty-two, there was an approval to, uh, borrow up to four hundred and forty-two, forty-two thousand dollars to construct a cold storage building and have the, uh, former Maple Street Fire Station, um, demolished because of contamination of that site. When we went out to, uh, out to, uh, out and got prices, uh, the prices of that storage shed were one and a half times what we had, um, estimated, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, and speaking to a couple of vendors. So frankly, at this point, um, there are other priorities that we have in this community, in my mind. Uh, we can't build it. I don't want to, I don't feel comfortable coming back asking for the balance at this point with everything else going on. So to clean up, uh, our, our books, um, I'm asking the board to consider supporting, uh, rescinding that borrowing authority. So we'd have to go back to town meeting at some point in the future for that, all that funding, if we decide to do that.
So it's just going to be storage shed?
No, they're rescinding the, they're rescinding the borrowing authorization for that, um, building.
What are we doing? Is it nothing else?
It's the, the, no, so the, the Maple Street Fire Station is used for cold storage. We've got a number of different departments to store a whole bunch of different things there. My, my wish a couple of years ago was to build and relocate that equipment, because we have, um, hazardous materials, uh, in the, either in the building or, and, uh, on the ground that could be cleaned up. And the longer we wait, the bigger chance we have of an issue. Guess, you know, I, I guess in my mind, we take, you know, we, we, we've been using that, or haven't used that Maple Street Fire Station in twenty-five years. We'll continue to plug away, we're using that as cold storage, until we get in a better situation that we, you know, that, 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 uh, either paying cash or financing this, um, is more of a priority than I think it's going to be over the next few years.
So I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero, zero. Tyler or Sheila, any?
I can take it.
Almost done. Article twenty-eight, um, this is, uh, to replenish uh, the waterways fund. A couple of years ago, the, um, there was a, a fund created to allow the harbor master, um, to address unforeseen expenses uh, within that, with, within his purview. A, a cap of thirty-five thousand dollars was, uh, placed on that. We're asking for twenty-five thousand fifty-four dollars, which will bring that, uh, balance up to thirty-five thousand dollars again July first. There's a hundred and twenty, almost a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in that fund. The FinCom approved of, of this, uh, article by a, a, a vote of seven, nothing. Happy to, Tyler may have more.
Yeah, just, I mean, just, if somebody knows, the, um, that, that's the Waterways Improvement Fund, so we, we went over it last year, actually. It was the first time that we, uh, we pulled money out. So, yeah, the, essentially the money, it comes from slip rack and mooring fees, and then half the excess tax of the boats. So there'll actually be more money coming in, as of right now, that's what's in, that's what's on the books, as people are a little late to paying their fees. But, um, all, all it does, and it really worked out last year because an engine died. And so what would happen was, what would be, uh, the harbor master would, you know, start the season right after, or right around the time of town meeting. And then you get into the season and something happens, and you have, you don't have the funds to be able to do it. Even though you have the money, you can't allocate that money. So the idea was to take some of that money and put it into, um, an, an account, um, so that they could access it throughout the year in emergencies, and in those emergencies, you still are under the same laws of what, what are we's funding has to be allocated towards. So last year, the money that came out of it was an engine and gangway repair, uh, repair. So as they pulled the gangway out, the thing broke, which is a pretty significant cost. So, uh, they had the ability to, to then come to the town, request the funds, and then, and then go directly in, and, and not have to wait for a special town meeting or a spring town meeting to address those issues.
So just, the, the description of this article was confusing, and I think I understand why now. So it says currently the balance of the waterway fund is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, but then if approved, the transfer of twenty-five thousand would replenish the account to the limit of thirty-five thousand. Do you see how that's confusing? So, is the waterway fund one account, and then the waterways improvement fund another account?
Yes.
Aha, so let's add that in there. So replenish the waterways improvement funds, and then I'm with you. I just, it didn't make sense.
That, I, I see what you're saying, yeah.
So basically, in fiscal twenty-five, the water, the, the water, the harbor master will have thirty-five thousand dollars to, uh, make unanticipated repairs, improvements, whatever it happens to be, so I'll, I'll.
It makes sense. I just was, it was confusing for those of us who are in the weeds of the funds. I was like, how does one hundred and twenty-seven plus twenty-five equal thirty-five?
Sort of accounting equation.
Yeah.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article twenty-eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and waterfront committee is moving that guy?
Articles twenty-nine and thirty, um, are related to what the, um, to what our town clerk, Paul Bazza, talked about. Uh, the first is to, the first is to adopt.
Paul Gallagher.
Paul, did I say Paul Bazza?
You did.
This, these two articles are almost free, so they can't be Paul Bazza's.
All right.
So take that, take that.
I, I moved, I moved the Board of Selectmen recommend the approval of Articles twenty-nine and thirty.
Second.
All right, twenty-nine and thirty. Uh, Tyler said second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then it does make sense to me if the one person moves both of those. Sheila, did you want to do it? You can, it doesn't matter to me. We still have one, two more articles that we have to do. Okay. I'll do it, it's fine. I can work with Paul.
Yeah, no doubt in my mind. All right, Article thirty-one is to amend the Animal Control Bylaw. So what, what the Animal Control Officer is trying to do is to, uh, increase, uh, the amount of, right now, they charge fifty dollars for any offense, um, regarding the leash law. What they're asking to do is to step that, uh, fee or fine up from, uh, fifty dollars for the first offense to a hundred dollars for the second offense, and a third offense in the same year would be three hundred dollars.
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article thirty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sheila, you want to do that one? So let's see, hold on, we've got Eric has three, I have four, Tyler, Sheila, and Dawn all have two.
Okay, Article thirty-two is to ask town meeting to allow, uh, the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Assessors, and the Town Administrator to, uh, be authorized officers, officers to negotiate and execute payment lieu of tax agreements, pilot agreements. Uh, we often have those with, um, the solar arrays are typically what they've been used for in Kingston.
Okay, any questions?
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article thirty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Two more.
What?
Thirty-three and thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
All those on the back?
Planning Board.
Just teasing you. So Article thirty-three is being recommended by Town Council. There's a, potentially a conflict or a concern, uh, that's been raised. Uh, the, the wastewater department has an easement to construct a leaching field, up off of property that abuts Indian Pond with an easement across a piece of property at Indian Pond. There's been some discussions back and forth between the Town Legal Counsel and Indian Pond's Legal Counsel. So, uh, what Attorney Tellerman has suggested is to, um, bring this article forward to better, to, to, to more, to better clarify, I guess, the situation with the, the easement off of Country Club Way, for the construction of, and maintenance of that, of that, uh, proposed, um, leaching field.
Any questions on that?
I move the Board of Selectmen recommend approval of Article thirty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And Sheila, you want to do that one too?
I will do it.
All right. So you have three.
So can I, just one clarification thing, I'm sorry to extend this. Should the Sewer Commissioners move that?
I think that would be, that would make sense. Yeah, that would make sense.
All right.
I'd be happy to have them.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, they can better speak to, they can better speak to the needs.
It's really specifically, specifically for the Wastewater Department. Last article. We have, um, right now, this is the language that's been reviewed by legal counsel to, um, propose, uh, an amendment to the zoning bylaw to allow one accessory housing unit, excuse me, to a single-family dwelling uh, in circum, certain Sampson, certain circumstances, excuse me. So a lot of people have he, have heard of A, uh, AHU, or Accelerate, accessory dwelling units, housing units. It's an opportunity, I think, that the Planning Board is looking at. It's, it's controversial, obviously, because it potentially adds more, more uh, living units, uh, in town, but it's designed for, you know, ideally, um, you know, parents who are moving or aging and moving back into town, things of that nature. Uh, the town of Plymouth, at their town meeting, approved it last Saturday. Uh, the Planning Board has not taken an official vote on this yet. There may be a language change, um, after the Planning Board is, is deliberated about this. So what I would suggest, if the board would be willing to, is delay this vote until the Planning Board has voted on final language and, um, you're voting on the, on the, on the language itself, that the Planning Board either supports it or not.
So, would, would my chicken coop count as a housing unit if my daughter moves in there, out of the house?
I, I, I would ask you, I would defer to the Planning Department. Just understand that if you have an accessory dwelling unit, you have a chicken coop, we will tax you.
Yes.
Did you, did you want to talk about these recommendations as well? Okay. So we're done with the warrant for this meeting, but.
Yeah, lastly on the budget, um, and it's been discussed in, in different forms tonight during our warrant review, there have been, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about the fact that we still don't have a school budget, that the school committees have supported, and, and right now, we're looking at an increase, uh, of over seven percent in spending. So, um, I know the school department is doing what they can to, uh, reduce their appropriations, and, and I, and I thought, you know, I would try to look at what's being proposed to, what's been proposed so far in the town budget, um, and see if there's anything that, uh, that, that I could suggest to the Board of Selectmen that will allow me to go to the FinCom on thir, on next week and, um, suggest some, some, some change, some cuts. So, one of them you already know about, uh, the Planning Department, our, our Assistant Planner position. That person, uh, has decided to resign, um, from a full-time position, is willing to come into work five to ten hours a week. Uh, so what we're doing, what I'm proposing to do is eliminate the full-time salary of fifty, just over fifty thousand dollars, and cut it. and cut it back to twenty-eight thousand dollars, which will allow her, I frankly put a little cushion in there. It's more than ten hours a week. I could have some part-time people come in as well, depending on the workload in the Planning Department. So I'm proposing to, to reduce the Planning Department wage line by twenty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars to reflect that part-time position. The Agriculture Commission was concerned that their budget was cut from a thousand to two fifty. I think the Fin, the, the FinCom has already approved, recommended approval of a thousand dollar, a thousand dollar budget for an increase of seven fifty. I had included in my, in the fiscal twenty-five budget in the Selectmen's Office, a new procurement position in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. I would be willing to eliminate that position from the fiscal twenty-five budget if the Board were looking for cuts. There were a couple of things that have come up that were funded through the FinCom Reserve Account this year. NIT, one of those was a new firewall for the fiber network. The other one is a dual, I apologize, I didn't finish my sentence, a dual authentication for, for users who go into the town network remotely. There'll be a dual authentication. Our insurance companies are recommending it. It's, it's a security practice that I'm sure Eric can get into much, in much greater detail than, than, than I can. But it's, it's a, like I mentioned, it's a, it's a security item for people who access the network remotely, working from home or, or needing to go online. Carol, for example, is, is I'm sure not only attending this meeting, but she's in the network right now. She would have to, to have dual authentication. There's a three thousand dollar cost to do that annually. So I'm looking to add that to the IT budget. I'm also looking to, as I think the Board knows, our IT manager is retiring in June, May or June. I would like to bring to the Board at your meeting on the twenty-third, a recommendation to outsource our IT oversight with a company that would manage our IT services remotely, our network remotely. Have a, what we're looking for is to have a person from the company that we would hire in here for a number of hours during the week, but certainly not full-time. There's an opportunity to save some money with that. So I'm looking to hire an outside vendor and increase the IT budget in the amount of sixty-four thousand six hundred dollars and then eliminate the IT manager position in the amount of a hundred and eight thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars. The other item that I forgot to put on this list, frankly, that I just want to try to include if the Board would allow, is to budget part-time slash overtime in the Selectmen's Office for times of the year where it's busy. And with, with the elimination of the procurement, the procurement position, you know, we would be down a person. And there may be times during the year, and I, I'm, the ten thousand dollars is based on, you know, an estimate, frankly, just to allow for some part-time people to come in during certain times of the year. You know, maybe we're printing out, you know, printing out town meeting information. And rather than having Trish or Kathleen having to stop and do what they're doing, we go to babysit the, the copier. We could have somebody come in and help out with that. There may be some other times during the year, license, we've got, you know, clamming licenses now. It's clamming license season. We've got a lot of people coming in for that. So, you know, I'd like to have a bit of a buffer, frankly, if I could, knowing I'm losing that position if the Board would be willing to consider that.
Okay. Thoughts?
So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking, if I could, just to maybe finalize this, I'd like to present these changes to the FinCom next week.
The ten thousand is not enough, is it?
It's not, but I will add it. Yeah, so it'll be a hundred and sixteen.
Conceptually, I have no problem with these recommendations going to Finance Committee.
Right, a hundred and sixteen?
Yes.
One hundred and, one, no, negative. Yeah.
I'd be adding money, so it'd be a hundred and sixteen.
Yeah. So reducing, so move to support the Town Administrator's recommendation to adjust the Selectmen's recommended budget down to one hundred and sixteen, that, down, the, in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars per our discussion.
Yep.
Second.
Sorry, Tricia, you don't have to watch that part of the meeting repeatedly for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. I think we just have, anything else on the warrant? Are we good for there?
You're done.
Okay, excellent. All right. So the next thing we have is the water foreman. So due to resignation, the position of water foreman is vacant. And after the standard recruiting process, we have a recommendation before us from the water superintendent to fill that position. I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity on one question I had, which was this position requires a good deal of specific certifications and whatnot, as listed in the job posting, special requirements. There's different licenses and certifications for being a foreman of the Water Department. So, and according to the superintendent, he has, this candidate has passed all of the exams, has all the necessary licenses for the position. So that's what I have.
Well, you know I love these. No. All right. I move the Board of Selectmen appoint Michael Williams to the position of water foreman, grade nine, step two, full-time position as part of the Kingston Town Employee Union Labor with the Water Department, with an anticipated start date of April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, consistent with the terms of the offer letter.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, there we go. All right. So we have minutes.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, as amended.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That's five zero zero. I know you've talked a lot, but you get to talk some more.
I don't have a lot to say in my administrative report. Again, as, as everybody I think knows at this point, the FinCom is meeting on the seventeenth of April next week. And they expect to finish their budget review. They'll be meeting with the school department as well to try to finalize and take, and take final votes on what's going to be on the warrant. The boat ramp project is still moving forward, still on, on, on target for a finished date in, in May. The, the ramp itself was poured earlier this week or last weekend. I apologize for not the exact day. And I, we've put a bid out, two, two bids out, frankly. One to supply the concrete for the parking lot. And the second is to spread the concrete and finish the, the parking lot. So those bids are due next week and the week after and hope to get everything done at, it, certainly before the boating season is in full swing. William Copang was hired as a call firefighter recently, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board may have. Other than that.
I don't have any questions.
Just a reminder about the chief, the chief's, yeah.
The swearing in ceremony?
Yep, I think the chair mentioned at the beginning, it's five o'clock Thursday night.
Six.
Six o'clock Thursday night. It's.
At the intermediate school?
At the intermediate school, just where we have, where we have town meeting. You want to come in?
Chairman.
Chairman, he, I'm sure he would love the, if you can, you better get, you better get there early though. Sounds like there's going to be a lot of people.
Is PAC TV coming?
Uh, so.
I'm sorry, the local scene?
So what I'll say is this, Tyler, somebody reached out to ask them at some point this week, they said they had some conflict. So I spoke to the gentleman who was behind the glass for a while this, this evening. And he's reached out to somebody at PAC TV who's more of a decision maker. They're going to call me tomorrow. What I offered is maybe a compromise, is to try to have the, the sound system that the school uses in the auditorium as the sound. And if they could be there to provide audio, I'm sorry, video. That might be a compromise. We don't need as many people and as much time to set up. So I'm, I'm, I'm confident that the local scene will come through.
Excellent.
Confident.
Any other questions for Keith? Any Selectmen comments? I have one thing, but I'm going to let you guys go first.
So you guys all know this, but my, so my mom has been, was diagnosed with a really aggressive cancer. So if I'm not at something that you feel like I should be at, that may be where I am. So she's, we're taking lots of trips to Boston and I don't really love sharing this kind of stuff like this. But I figured it's, it's worth mentioning because I don't know if I'll be there on, on Thursday to support the new chief. And I just wanted people to know why. So, that's it. Yeah. Thank you.
And with that, if anyone wants to make a motion to adjourn, our next meeting is April twenty-third at six P M.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Have a great night.